To order Wednesday, December 2. Um, can we please have the roll call?
Commissioner, um, Father Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
I'm here.
And Chair Landers.
I am here. Uh, may we?
I'm here too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pastor. I went right past the P.
Okay, we are all here. Um, let us have a, uh, the planning directors' report, please, if we can.
Um, so the report for today. Um, so your upcoming planning commission meeting will be on December the 9th, uh, 1427. Yeah, we're gonna have a vesting sign of track map on that agenda. And then that will, this will also be your second study session on the housing element update. Um, the focus of that session will be on the preliminary sites analysis and a review of the goals and policies. Um, we are aiming to have the agenda posted tomorrow. Um, and we'll also try to have the presentation up on that agenda as well. Um, council actions, uh, nothing of note to report recently. However, um, the council will be, uh, holding their own housing element study session on December the 15th. Um, of course, the installation of, uh, the newly elected council members will be on December the 8th or the prior. Um, as we have been trying to commit to is providing you a running tally of the upcoming housing element events. Um, so again, there for members of the public who wish to follow the update, um, that is the URL you see on the screen, SantaMonica.gov/housing-element-update. Tomorrow, we will be kicking off, uh, the first technical working group on housing production. Um, next week, we will have, uh, in addition to the planning commission study session, will be the housing element update, EIR scoping meeting, um, and a rent control board study session. Uh, December 11th will be the technical working group on preservation and stability. Um, please also note that that is the closing date, um, to submit, uh, responses on the online questionnaire. Um, December 11th will also be a technical working group, um, for, um, oh, that got done twice, so ignore that. Um, December 17th, that's a typo, uh, will be the, the second technical working group production. And then finally, at the end of the month, will be the closing date, um, for comments on the notice of preparation for the EIR for the housing element update. Um, so that concludes that report and I will answer questions.
I have a question.
I, I see. Well, let me just ask David if he has anything he wants to add.
Um, good after, good evening, everyone. Sorry for that little technical hiccup. Um, I don't, I don't have anything to add. Um, I, I of course didn't hear what Jink said, but, um, uh, I don't have anything off the top of my head to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Pastor.
Um, so I didn't get any notice of the production, um, technical group working meeting. Um, so when?
It is.
How were those notices sent out? And can you, do you know why we didn't get notices?
Um, we will look into that. You should have received a notice to your SM Gov, um, emails, um, for the production group.
It's not either.
Yeah.
Preservation one either.
Yeah, let me.
Production was out with Maya, Alisa, and I, Don.
Right.
I know. I'm saying I want preservation. I assume I would have talked to them too. Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, we haven't sent one out for preservation yet, but the one to production went out on Monday, um, Monday afternoon. Um, we will obviously look into that and get that to you right away. Um, I, I don't know why, uh, you didn't get that because we, it was sent via email, um, to everybody on the list.
So what time is that tomorrow?
It's from, it's from 10 to 12.
Okay, I can't.
And I.
Tomorrow.
I, I apologize for that. Um, I'm not sure what happened, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, but do, if you'll send us the link and then, um, you know, I'll join if I can.
They will be recorded, right? We had this conversation about that.
Oh, right.
That, that is correct. They will be, they, they will be recorded. Um, so anyone can view them, um, after the meeting. So they'll be posted, um, on the housing element website. We will also, um, have meeting summaries, written summaries available as well.
Commissioner Lambert? Leslie, do you have a question?
I did. Um, I would like to make a suggestion to staff, uh, regarding the housing element workshops and everything that we're doing regarding that. I suggested to you, as soon as you can, send out the link to all commissioners to the SCAG website so that they can, uh, those who haven't already checked it out, can learn more about the RENA and how it's derived. It's a very, very thorough description of where the data comes from, the public outreach, the public hearings, et cetera, that led to the RENA. And it's very useful. And I would suggest for those of you who have not researched that, that you do so. Um, also, the, the HCD handbook, and this is a little arcane, but the handbook of HCD, uh, guidelines on site selection, that link might also be useful to send out to commissioners. There's a lot of information out there that you can get yourselves. Um, and I think it would really be a good basis for. Thank you.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is, there had been some discussion of the Providence St. John DA, so that's been played, is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's right. It was originally, um, I think we had tentatively looked at that for December the 9th, and that is, um, now, uh, not, not yet scheduled, but we will certainly.
And looking at the housing element workshop and meeting this, um, at our last meeting, we received a commitment from the city attorney to facilitate a meeting by the, with the housing commission. Um, have, has progress been made to enable that to work council study session?
There is, um, we are working on that. Progress, I would say, has been made. Um, I haven't heard that it's been officially scheduled, but, um, yeah, I think we've all heard the concerns and we're working with the city manager's office to, um, address the issue. Um, but again, I don't, I don't think it's been finalized, but we'll keep you posted.
Can I add something? My understanding, my understanding was that was a, uh, not going to be a joint meeting, but just that you were asking for the housing commission.
Yeah, it's not, we weren't talking about a joint meeting, no. Yeah, just.
No, no, not a joint meeting. Just their own, just that, but that they should, um, given the affordable housing considerations. We, we talked about this last time, so we don't need to reverse it. Um, okay, other, are there any other questions for the planning director? Being none, we will move forward. Uh, planning commission announcements, any? I don't see any, so now I'm gonna read the notifications regarding public comment. Note, tonight's procedures for public comments. We are accepting oral public comment by phone through the pre-registration system that was noted on the agenda. Registration for oral comment closed at 3:30 PM today. As a reminder to everyone, uh, registration for oral comment will be closing two hours before the beginning of the meeting on a regular basis. If you are a member of the public who registered for public comment, check email and instructions. Instructions were emailed at the start of this meeting. You should have them. Written comments received until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received by 12:00 PM today will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but will not be posted online with the planning commission's agenda, might not be reviewed by the planning commission, and will not be read aloud during public comment during the meeting. I note a, uh, written comment was received prior to noon, did not make its way into the packet, but I do want to acknowledge for the record that staff, uh, was alerted to the error and has distributed that knowledge, that particular comment, uh, to the full commission. So that has been received. Uh, I do want to also remind everyone that the moderator chat function in blue jeans is for technical help from administrative staff only. It is not for public comment. Please note that commissioners cannot see the chat and any comments entered into the chat will not be forwarded to the commission or entered into the record. Thank you very much for your understanding. Um, and, uh, you know, raise your seat backs and the seat in front of you. Um, we have no approval of minutes, and we will now move to item 7A, uh, and I will call on Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you, uh, Chair Landers. I'm gonna need to recuse myself from this item because, uh, as a member of the public before I joined the commission, I objected to the cripple of this project. Uh, so I'll go ahead and log off and. But, uh, Melissa, tell me what I should log back on. Is that a good?
Can I ask? Yeah, can I just, I want to ask on the record that before you turn off it, uh, to, to Heidi, um, is it, does he have to log all the way off or can he just turn off his, off his microphone and his, uh, his video?
And simply not participate? Um, so it's probably fine if he just simply not participate and turns off his microphone and his video. Uh, this is not a, um, financial conflict of interest, in which case the rules are stricter. Um, so, so if, if he does that, that's, that's probably sufficient.
Whatever you're comfortable with, Commissioner.
That's what I'll do. I'll, uh, log off and log back on once you move to 7.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. We will take.
I'm just turning off my camera here, sorry.
Okay. Uh, do we have public comment on this, on 7A?
No, no public comment.
Okay. Uh, all right. Is there a motion or a discussion? There was a letter on this, so, um, I believe that it was addressed. The item was addressed, the, the typographical error was addressed, so is there a motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm adopted staff recommendation.
Okay, I heard Commissioner Reese made the motion second by Commissioner Lambert. Jim spoke first, so, uh, let's have a roll call.
Great. Uh, Commissioner Father Bernardi? Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner, um, Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landers.
Yes, that passes 6-0 with the recusal of Commissioner Raskin, so we can bring him back. Um, I'll pause, and there he is. Okay, so, uh, let's move on to item 7B, 1820 Broadway, uh, the conditional use permit and the variance. Uh, at the moment, we have one caller registered in the queue. Are there any, um, is that person present?
Yes, we actually had two registered, but only one is present in the queue right now.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm gonna ask, uh, staff and the city attorney, uh, to lay out, uh, where we are on this item. Uh, and then I suggest that we open the queue for public comment and then we can have discussion. So, let me just ask if staff or the city attorney wants to give us a briefing before we hear from the public.
Uh, certainly, I would be, uh, happy to start, and Heidi could certainly jump, jump in as, as the commission has questions. So, um, you know, a, a, as you're aware, this SOA was originally, um, posted with the July 1st, uh, planning commission agenda. At that time, the applicant raised some questions with respect to the SOA, so it was, uh, continued at the request of staff for us to double check the record again. Uh, we brought it back at your last meeting, um, with, uh, after having listened to the recording, um, and the commission, uh, you know, was not able to, um, come to a decision about it and so voted to continue to, to this meeting. Um, we provided sort of a cover memo, um, for the SOA th- this evening, um, just to summarize for the commission that staff did go back to again, review the recording of the meeting. We do, uh, believe, uh, that the SOA does accurately reflect the record of what the commission voted upon, um, that night. Um, and so that, that is the SOA that is presented, uh, to you.
Heidi, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, so, so, yeah, so I think this is a very unique situation for the commission to be in. I'll turn on my camera. Um, there, I'm like, the SOA is, as you are all aware, a record of the action that was taken. Uh, it's not unlike meeting minutes in that way. So, so part of the problem that we are, that you have, um, been discussing is, uh, kind of whether or not the intent was clear, uh, of some of the commissioners with respect to the motion that was made. So, as the planning manager explained, uh, DAF went back and focused on the, uh, wording of the motion that was made, that was actually, uh, voted on. So that was how staff came to that conclusion, and that's where the recommendation comes from. So if you are unable to, um, come to, uh, an agreement or you have concerns about that agreement, um, there may be, um, options for you to, um, perhaps reconsider the item rather than, um, uh, well, because the SOA is a record of what happened. So you cannot revisit this, this item without doing some sort of procedural step. One step could be a reconsideration. This would be a deviation from your rules of order. Um, and given this very unique situation, um, it might be something you could, um, discuss and consider. Uh, you would not be able to take action on any sort of reconsideration this evening, uh, because it's not on your agenda. So if that is something that you are, uh, we are happy to discuss with you, uh, procedurally how that could work. Um, but we did just want to make you aware that that would be an option. As you know, the appeal period has passed, um, for this item. The other option for the, um, property owner would be to file, uh, an amendment for the CUP, um, if, you know, they did not end up liking what the action was. So, that's kind of procedurally why we think this reconsideration could be something that you may want to explore. The, again, the, as actually Commissioner Raskin brought up last time, the rules of order require you to actually bring the motion before the end of the meeting. Um, that is intended to create certainty for the commission and for applicants and for the public. Um, however, given the fact that there may be some uncertainty here with respect to how the, um, that what the motion was and what the action was, reconsideration may be, um, an avenue that you may want to explore. Again, so if you, after your discussion about the SOA and the language of the SOA, have questions about that, uh, the planning manager and I are happy to discuss whether or not you'd like to place that on a future agenda. And also, I do believe that the applicant team may, um, want to, uh, make some comments about that as well.
Are there any questions before we go to the public? I think it would be better if we held our questions until we hear from the public, but, okay, Commissioner Raskin?
Just one, one quick question. Heidi, does the SOA function as the official record of findings, uh, under the Topanga case and its progeny?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Uh, and for clarity, Heidi, just, uh, before we lose you, um, the alternative method for resolving the issue requires at least two additional meetings. Is that correct? We would agenda his reconsideration, but then the rehearing could not take place at the same meeting. And so there would be a suspension of the rules and a reconsideration at one meeting, followed by a rehearing at a second.
Yes, the hearing would need to be noticed, just as any other, any other, uh, hearing would be noticed.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the public then.
Okay, we do have two callers on the line with us right now. Um, quickly, I do want to clarify how much time they have to speak. Um, is it two minutes across the board tonight due to the volume of callers on item 9A, or do they get three minutes for this item?
Uh, Heidi?
So I'm, yes, under the rules of order, it's, it's 20, uh, speakers total over the cross of, over, across all items, or, um, over seven for one item. So if you don't have 20, um, speakers in queue, then this would be three minutes for this item.
Okay, even though we have seven for another item, it doesn't affect this item?
Yes.
Okay.
It would only affect the item where you have seven speakers.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, our first speaker in the queue for this item is Jackson McNeil. Jackson, I'm taking you off mute, and you are now live in the meeting. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Jackson McNeil, attorney for Quanza Jones, the owner of 1820 Broadway, and I'll try to keep it shorter than three minutes. Um, thank you for taking the time to consider the SOA once more, and, uh, thank you to staff. While we don't agree with their assessment of the commission's decision, staff did reach out to me this week to discuss this condition. They were professional and helpful, as always, um, and we appreciate their effort. Uh, that being said, it's the commission, not staff, that makes the ultimate decision about the correct wording of the SOA. Um, and respectfully, staff's reading of the commission's discussion appears to rely very heavily on a single sentence in which Chair Landers admittedly uses the word balconies plural, and in which Commissioner Pastor is the second of the motion, then ascends to Chair Landers' condition somewhat later. However, uh, we would note that in the preceding two minutes, Chair Landers also refers to the balcony as "the balcony" and "the space" when discussing amplification, and says, "Would the applicant object to no amplification on the balcony?" Our client asks for clarification and inquires, "You're talking about the back section," and no one corrects her. In the same two minutes, Commissioner Lambert says, "I suspect that the other balcony will be more used than that one," and Commissioner Reese says, "I'm more worried about it becoming a congregating spot, and I don't see why we can't just move it to the front of the building." And I'm sure there are other examples. Accordingly, you know, although we admit the discussion is muddled, on balance, we think that the condition was intended for the rear balcony. Certainly, that appeared to be the understanding of the majority of the commissioners, and that was definitely the understanding of our client. Finally, uh, whatever the path forward tonight, my client requests that the commission make a decision tonight. Um, with all due respect, and we appreciate staff's effort to be creative here, we're frankly not interested in a rehearing. Um, and with all due respect, my client's a little frustrated. I think she's gonna speak, but, you know, I know she loves Santa Monica. She wants to bring her business here. She feels as though this decision was clear, but now five months later, um, her appeal rights have lapsed, and she wants to move, uh, this project forward. So, in all cases of, you know, the ASO has resolved this evening. Um, I will stay on the line to answer any questions, uh, that you may have that I can answer, but I think that the, um, applicant is also gonna speak herself. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lambert?
Um, I have a question. Um, one of the, um, alternatives that staff raised was amending the, the action, which I assume is less onerous than a total rehearing on everything. Uh, would you be interested in pursuing that? I'm not really sure what the process is or the timing is. Is that an option you would think about?
By amending the action, do you mean a motion for reconsideration and, and essentially rehearing?
I'm not sure they're the same process. I didn't get that understanding.
So if I may, if I may jump in, so, I, what I was referring to was, uh, an actual amendment to the CUP.
Right.
Because procedurally, there aren't other options, and an amendment to the CUP requires a full public hearing. It's actually, it would, it would, it would be shorter and cost the applicant less to do a reconsideration. Because there would be no filing fee and no application, and the time and the processing time would be longer if they were to file, um, an amendment to this.
Thank you. Would, would the applicant be interested in doing that?
She'll be on the, in the line in a minute, but with all due respect, you know, we don't want to file a new application and pay a new filing fee to amend and go through another hearing process. And we think the decision is clear, and we've waited five months, um, to get to this point in time. So, you know, I'll let her clarify if she wants to, but I, with all due respect, I don't think that's something the applicant will be interested in.
No, I'm, I'm very, I'm very sorry for the situation. Um, it should not have happened the way it did. Thank you.
Okay, I, I have a que, I have a question for Mr. McNeil, um, before we hear from the, from, from, from Ms. Jones. Um, and I would appreciate, I, I really, uh, we, as you've heard at the previous meeting, there is clearly frustration that we are in the situation that we're in. So, I, I, I want to preface my question by saying that we share your frustration. However, we are in an awkward position with respect to staff's determination as to what transpired at the, um, meeting, and you are asking us to choose between your version of events and staff's version of events. Given a binary choice that is unsatisfactory, between a, adopting the SOA tonight, or moving to a reconsideration and a rehearing, which I'm sure will be quite short, which of those two options would you prefer?
Um, the, the applicant is not, and again, she will, she can clarify, but the applicant's not interested in a rehearing. Ideally, we, we'd like to be in design review, if not plan check, right now, and, and, um, you know, I, I don't think that we're going to want to risk, uh, further delay, um, by, you know, going through multiple hearings just to get to, um, a rehearing. Uh, you know, again, we think the record is clear. We think, um, the record supports what, um, our version of the condition, and so we hope that the commission, the commission would be able to revise, uh, the SOA tonight on the dais and accept the revised condition as we've proffered.
Okay, well, we'll find out whether that's possible. Let's go to the, let's go to the, uh, next, uh, speaker.
Okay, our next caller is Quanza Jones. Quanza, you are now off mute. You're live in the meeting. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Welcome. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm hopeful that you, okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So, thank you, commissioners, and I'd love to say Happy New Year, but we still have a little ways to go before that actually begins. It's 2020, and we're still here. Um, one of the reasons I wanted to be able to speak, quite frankly, is because I feel like my voice has been silenced through all of this, specifically because the appeal period has passed. The understanding of what actually transpired, for some, has been muddled. For me, and even in reading of the transcript, and quite frankly, when we were there in this very exhaustive and thorough process, I will say, I specifically asked, are you talking about the back section? And specifically asked for clarity, because if I had thought it was going to be something that was controlling for both areas, I would have had an objection, and I would have said something then. But no one indicated that it was for both. It is, was certainly, from my understanding, and from some of the commissioners' understanding, the singular use of balcony. So, as you can imagine, the, the number of months, five months, um, in 2020 has felt like five years, so the five months here has felt like two years. Um, the lack of appeal process, the, the, I, what I would say, and all due respect, Commissioner, uh, Chair Landers, is I don't think it's a binary decision between what my understanding and belief is and the staff's understanding. I actually think it's solely a, a decision between what commissioners thought and all of us who were there and present in that moment. And words, as you can always see, in transcripts or otherwise, don't always tell the, the full story when we were there hearing in first person, those many months ago, what happened. So certainly, my frustration is, is palpable, I will say. And quite frankly, my exhaustion is palpable, too. Um, it's really just a matter of, I've wanted to be in Santa Monica, as I mentioned before. I specifically chose Santa Monica as the place to grow my business and thought of Santa Monica as this, you know, I, I just think it's an ideal location. Um, and this is something that was unexpected. Um, I thought the issue was resolved. It has not been, but I am certainly hoping and praying that tonight it will be, so that we can all move forward and proceed with what our understanding, or at least my understanding and certain commissioners' understanding of what the outcome was. And with that, I am finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Jones? Okay, seeing none, let's close the public hearing. Um, and is there a discussion? Uh, do we have any more questions for the city attorney? Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, no, I'm ready to discuss, I think. Although, we probably need staff to help with this, because I went back and I looked at it, and the way Attorney McNeil described it is exactly how I re, reviewed the, the presentation. Um, it was muddled. I do think the focus was on that back deck. It certainly was my focus that whole night. Um, I, and I even said that, but I do, I do agree that it was, it was muddy because we said balconies at some point, and every, and then we never clarified that. So, it was not my intent to, to do it on the front balcony, see where we are with the, with the record, that how it could be read that way, and I think it's a mistake, and it, I want to find a way to correct it.
So I will, um, I, yeah, Commissioner Lambert?
Um, I, I just have a question of staff in terms of how you interpret the record. Um, is the motion the overriding language that you look at versus the conversation?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we do look at the motion because it's not unusual for the commission to have, at times, extensive deliberations. You know, the motion matters, I think, procedurally. Um, if there was concern that the original motion, you know, didn't have support, certainly a substitute motion could have been made. Um, you know, that, that didn't occur. You know, that, that didn't occur, you know, and, and, you know, so the motion does matter ultimately in terms of what was, what was voted upon. And, you know, sometimes the motion does include specifically the discussion that occurred beforehand as an example, you know, but that was not the motion that was made, which is how we came to the conclusion that we did.
I just want to say that I appreciate you, because I know exactly what I had in my mind during the conversation, this one balcony, which is why I use the singular for balcony. And I'm, I'm very sorry this situation is a recourse other than a rehearing.
So I'm going to, I'm going to speak. I, I feel very strongly in the opposite. I would not have voted for a motion that, that allowed amplification across the alley to the preschool. That was never in my mind, something that was under consideration. I would not have, it is why I use the plural. And if I had thought for a moment that amplification across the alley to the preschool was going to be contemplated, I would have named that and made sure that we were not allowing it. So I, you know, I, I, I respect what my colleagues had said, but it sounds like we may have voted with different understandings of what the motion was, but I was very clear that there was not to be amplification either on the south-facing balcony or the west alley-facing balcony. And that's the best I have. And I, I wish that this had been resolved a whole lot sooner because I agree that it puts the applicant in a really untenable position, and I'd love to find a way to resolve it. So I will also say that I'm open to the language that, that, that Mr. McNeil has submitted as an alternative, because it, it protects, it bans amplification across the alley. But I do want to be respectful of staff and the city attorney in terms of how we get to a defensible way to approve that language. And I am uncomfortable with the idea that we would overrule the determination upon, you know, review by the staff. I think we just have to be very, very careful about what we are saying if we are kind of revising the STOWA after the fact based on a lack of clarity. So with that, I'll, I saw Commissioner Raskin in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. You know, as a, as a preliminary matter, I, I've, I've gone through the tape, I've reviewed it, I've reviewed all the submittals that have been presented to us. Based on, on what I've seen, my opinion is that the direction was given by the maker of the motion that the conditions should be such that are, you know, it's essentially what's, what's presented before us in the STOWA that was written by, by staff tonight. That's my opinion. I don't feel 100% comfortable, you know, voting. I will to move this forward if necessary, but you know, I wasn't there, I wasn't part of the discussion. I've reviewed it on tape and, and I've come to this opinion based on all the evidence. But that said, I think in fairness, I think we, we, we should really consider, you know, some sort of abbreviated reconsideration of this so that we can, you know, just in, in terms of reaching a fair and equitable result, give the applicant their, their, their day, their day here at the public hearing. All, all that being said, I, and this was discussed a little bit last time, I do think that we need to seriously relook at the process of adopting statements of official action. You know, legally speaking, we're required to make findings at the time of taking action. And I think that it's a little bit problematic to come back months later and do it the way that we're doing it here. You know, I've appeared before planning commissions as an attorney in many jurisdictions. As far as I'm aware, this is the only jurisdiction that does it this way. Most jurisdictions will revise the findings on the dais when it's adopted. I, I, yeah, I, I think we should, we should look at this as, as soon as possible to find some way of moving forward. And then, you know, as my final question, just in, in terms of, of looking at all our options, I assume the answer is no, but this is a question for Heidi. Can, can a planning commissioner appeal this decision to the city council or is that, has that ship sailed?
Ship sailed. Yes, it has. You are subject to that. And I also do want to mention, because you are correct, this is somewhat of a unique process, Santa Monica's process. The planning manager and I have already discussed ways of ensuring that the STOWA is actually in a completed form by the end of your hearing. So that you are, it, it will take longer and we will, we will sometimes have to stop hearings to change the language. But, you know, the code certainly doesn't prohibit you from, and you do at times when there are no changes or minor changes from adopting the STOWA at the conclusion of the hearing. So we are certainly going to work with you on making sure that you are comfortable with the language and that the motion is more clear to avoid this issue. And again, as you do oftentimes adopt STOWAs by the end of the hearing, we can certainly just work with you on making that a more common practice. And if that does require some drafting on the dais, then, then we will work with you on that.
Heidi, can I just ask for, before we, just as a matter of information, what is the notice requirement for a rehearing? How many days?
It would be 14.
14 days. Okay, Commissioner, I have a thought, but let's hear from Commissioner Pastor.
A couple things. One, I, I think frankly, the record could be read either way. I think that, I hear that there was a misunderstanding amongst the commissioners. I read the record and my recollection is that we were talking about, about the back patio. I think that the findings can be made, and I think that the findings under Topanga are not just what was in the motion, but the entire discussion. So I think that we're on solid ground in terms of making the findings. I have great respect for staff and I understand that that is their interpretation. And I also think sometimes the commission goes against staff. And so I don't think it's, I don't, to me, that is not a, a good enough reason for going one way or the other. In terms of like how we make this an equitable process for them, you know, one idea is, could we, if they were so interested, you know, if the commission votes to not, if the commission votes the way that the staff has written it, then, you know, could we guarantee, I mean, we can't guarantee anything because we're, you know, a, a body, but can we endeavor to basically say, we will hear you at this hearing and this hearing, such that there is no, that it can be done pretty quickly if they, if they want to get through? Alternatively, I don't see why the STOWA can't be amended in a way that if enough commissioners say, this is what we think we did at that hearing, that we can't just amend the STOWA. So I, I don't know, I, I don't necessarily think it's just sort of this either or anyway. And I, I expressed this last time and I will quickly express it again, I am extremely frustrated by this. I think it's unacceptable that STOWAs take five months, and I understand staff is super busy. So we either need, so to me, the solution is one of two things. One is what Heidi talked about, which is to get the STOWA to be complete at the time that we're having our hearings, or the code needs to be changed so that the appeal rights run from the date that the STOWA is issued, not from the action of the commission. Because to me, that's the real problem here, that they, they weren't able to exercise that rate.
Listening to colleagues, that what we need to do, and we have not heard from Commissioner Fonda Bonardi or from Commissioner Fresco to my, or we have, is we need to determine whether we want to essentially have a different recollection of the finding. And if in fact we do, then we should approve a STOWA that reflects our recollection of the finding, because that is what we are voting to do. But I think we need to go in a couple of steps. I will say, I'm, I'm going now to ask the city attorney, because I think we are on very narrow precipice here. Whether, what, how the city, if, the city attorney, if Heidi, if you could tell us whether we are okay to proceed with a discussion of what our recollection of that particular issue was? Because it sounds like we have a plurality of commissioners who recall differently the conversation.
Right.
Isn't that what we're doing already, is discussing that?
Well, we're, we're going between two things. We're discussing what we can do and we're, and I'm focusing in on what, how we can, how we can express our differing recollection.
Sure, so, so.
They've already told us.
Right. I mean, I, I think what you would be, would be doing, which is what you were already doing, is being referring back to the record and what the record said and how the record reads. And so along those lines, and I think one of the reasons why the planning manager and I were discussing reconsideration as an option was, we understood that there was some interest from the chair, and then, and then the applicant also mentioned a compromise position. That compromise position, which would be just portions of that front balcony that would have the restrictions, that was not part of your discussion, right? So that's, that is a, that is something that is not supported by the record. However, you know, we understand that there is perhaps some evidence to support just one balcony and some evidence to support both balconies, right? So, so that's kind of the difference between what you're doing and what you're looking for. And certainly, you're not taking in any new evidence or having discussions about that piece, because the hearing's over.
Right. And, and to be clear, what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about amending the STOWA, I am not talking about it to, to reach this compromise position. I am, I am suggesting the words that you, that instead of no amplified and/or, I'm sorry, no amplified noise and/or music of any kind shall be permitted on any of the upper level patio spaces, I'm only proposing it just be changed to the rear south. So I'm not suggesting anything that we didn't previously talk about.
I saw Commissioner Fresco's hand.
Yeah, I remember Jim's discussion of the one patio. I remember Sean's feelings about the other patio. And I just feel like this is so ambiguous and I personally cannot remember what was in my mind when I heard those words or what I understood. And I just feel like even though it's a horrible inconvenience to wait 14 days to have a rehearing of this piece of this item, I think it's the only way we can proceed that's fair and makes sense. Because otherwise, we're denying somebody's vote.
I'm going to, I'm, I see Commissioner Lambert, but we have not heard from Commissioner Fonda Bonardi, and I would like to find out what he's thinking, because we're going to have to get to a vote soon on something.
So I also looked at the record and it is objectively muddled. You could go either way, but I do remember specifically, my position was looking back at the ability of a complaint from, let's say, the preschool or a resident. Were they living within the sound standards of the seed? I remember we had a discussion, is could someone from Code enforcement get out there in time if there was a violation? And that to me was providing, I was given assurances that those people are, you know, waiting to go, they're waiting for that call, and they got their little sound meter in their hands, and that that would provide a backup protection for abuse or, let's say, not abuse, but problems that would be generated by amplified music. So I remember feeling reassured in that and that, to me, that was providing a second degree of protection for the neighborhood. So for me, because the record is muddled and I have feel we did discuss a second degree of protection, I think we could approve it with the, the sound only being in the front, however you define that, and that it was specifically excluded from the back. So that's where I would go with that. The record again being muddled, that was the thing that is driving this whole thing.
Okay. Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
I, I just, I, I agree with Commissioner Pastor and, and want to also add that, in my opinion, where there's ambiguity, and particularly when the appeal period has lapsed, the decision should be made in favor of the applicant, because he, she has no recourse after this. But I also am sympathetic, Commissioner Land, or Chair Landers, with your worries about the childcare center. So another reason maybe for rehearing, if we go that route, is to set ours that when the childcare center is in operation, there shall not be amplified music on the balcony, otherwise there can be. But I mean, that's just a thought. But again, clearly, there is major ambiguity. And, and so I think, again, that when that is the case, I would rather fall on the side of the applicant, because since he has no option to appeal, than otherwise.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest the following, and I want to be really practical here. I want to ask staff, it strikes me that we have to have a 14-day notice on, I understand that we have to have a 14-day notice on the rehearing. However, I don't believe we have to have a 14-day notice on the reconsider, on the suspension of the rules and the reconsideration. We can't take that up here. So I'm going to be very direct and find out if we have a quorum of the commission that would be available to meet tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, if we can get notice up quickly enough, for a two-item agenda to suspend the rules and reconsider and, and call for the rehearing. And then we could work with staff to try to get the rehearing scheduled for the week of the 14th, potentially on like the 17th, because that would be 14 days. So I don't know if that's possible, but I'm, what I would say is, if we're going to do this, I think we all have to do everything possible to get this resolved before the end of December. And since we're all on a lockdown, I'm going to suggest that barring meetings, we are all available. Oh, and I think we can probably waive a staff report. I think we can do a lot to streamline the hearing and get this done as quickly as possible. Commissioner Reese?
Chair, I'm on board for resolving this one, no doubt about it. But I want to make a motion right now that we change the STOWA to reflect the rear, that amplification is not allowed in the rear tonight and just be done with it.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
I just want to clarify, and that would be just based on the, basically based on the transcript as presented and explained by Commissioner Reese and also by the applicant's attorney, correct?
That is correct. I'm basing this not on, I'm basing this more on my review of the tape than on any, anybody else's recollection.
Thank you.
Are there comments on the motion before, I do want to speak to that motion, but Commissioner Raskin?
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I don't know if I should make it now or wait for discussion for.
Go ahead.
A substitute motion that we proceed down the path of agendizing reconsideration consistent with what Chair Landers has said.
Is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Commissioner Fresco, so now we're talking about the substitute motion. Does anybody want to speak on it? Because I do. Okay, I will, Commissioner Fresco, as a second, go for it.
I just feel like, because we're so unsure and nobody really knows what happened at that hearing, that just because we want to be nice to an applicant, it's just really not proper to adjust accordingly and that we have to have a rehearing.
Oh, so I would speak to that as well. I agree with what Commissioner Fresco said. I, I want to stress, and I really want, I hope that Ms. Jones is hearing this, that we, we do not feel good about this. We do not feel good about the fact that you didn't, we didn't give you the priority that you were requesting. And I want to say that I'm reasonably certain that had you had known that this was an issue, you would have offered some protection, perhaps along the lines of what Commissioner Lambert offered for the sound reaching the preschool. I, 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 I believe that the record is sufficiently muddled and I believe that the history of the commission with respect to noise ordinances and particularly sensitive sites that abut developments is such that we would not have, I don't believe we would have deliberately not addressed that. So I'm going to support the substitute motion and I think we should, I think there's enough to talk about on this item that we should just deal with it by the end of the month. Commissioner Pastor?
I, I think that you are. I think that you are, for lack of a better term, assuming facts not in evidence. Like you can't say, oh, I think we would have done this, or I think I would, we could have done that, right? We didn't. And so I think that often in land use, in discretionary land use proceedings, there's evidence that speaks to both sides. I think that is not uncommon. And if you think about making findings about consistency and, you know, welfare and all those things, a decision could come down either way. And so I think we should just, I vote for this tonight and get it done with.
Okay.
I don't think that what the motion that Jim made is improper in any way. And if the city attorney really thinks it is, then I want to hear that. But I don't think that is legally improper or procedurally improper.
Should we hear from the city attorney before we vote?
You know, I, I, on these issues, I, as I actually discussed with the chair and the vice chair, you do have some discretion with respect to it. It was your action that you took. This is your STOWA. Our office will be looking to ensure that it is reasonably supported by the record.
Sean, I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
If, if we vote for a substitute motion, doesn't that negate Jim's motion? Shouldn't we do Jim's motion first?
No, it's procedurally, we have to do.
I know, but if we vote for that negates the first motion.
Well, no, we vote for Commissioner Raskin's motion. And then if it fails, then someone has to make a new motion.
Or we can then proceed.
We'll go back to my motion.
We'll go back to Jim's motion.
And if, if my motion fails, then we can go back to a hybrid, which is probably going to be close to what Ellis said already.
That's right. Okay. So let us, so I want, before we vote on the reconsideration, staff, if we approve the reconsideration, do you believe that we can get the, the re, can we schedule a special meeting or two special meetings in December to get this done by the end of the month?
Um, I think that we can find a, a way is I guess we will have to make sure the commissioners are all available. I assume that you may all be. You know, we, you, you have a meeting on the ninth already. We had a regular meeting on the 16th, which was canceled. So it, I, I will say a meeting tomorrow is probably not possible. You need the, the 24 hours. The agenda has to be posted 24 hours in advance. All the staff that works on there is working this meeting. So it's just physically impossible to do that. I think the earliest we could consider would be a meeting on, I, 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 I don't want to speak for specific days right now, just because there, there are other meetings in the city. We try not to schedule commission meetings overlapping or council meetings overlapping on each other. But I just want to check calendars and make sure that we don't have a PC meeting happening the same night as something else. So that's.
But, but for the record, we right. But for the record, we could schedule a, a special meeting at any time of day we want. So if we have a quorum available Friday at noon, we could schedule a meeting for Friday at noon and then 14 days after that would be Friday, the 18th at noon. Now, now, that might not be convenient. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not implying that it's anyway easy. So I don't want to, I, I'm not, not trying to go there. I'm just pointing out that if a schedule, a special meeting can happen at any time of day, if we can get a quorum for it. Right? And you can schedule it and all the other things are possible.
That's right.
So let us, are we ready to vote on the reconsideration? So the motion is to agendize a suspension of the rules and possible reconsideration of the DR. I just want to be really clear. That is the motion. So let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Fonda Benardi?
No.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert? That was a no, right? Sorry, the audio got a little muddled there. Okay. Commissioner Pastor?
No.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No.
And Chair Landris?
Yes. And the motion fails. So now we're back to Commissioner Reese's original motion, which is to on the basis of the recollections of Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Lambert, and the applicant approve a STOWA that says what?
Sean, just to be clear, I'm saying it's based on my re-review of the public record. Last week was bait or, you know, so I'm basing on my review of the public record. It's not my recollection. It's my re-reviewing the public record indicating that it was a little muddled, but I understood the intent of the commission was to, to, to attack the back balcony in terms of noise. You had some issues about privacy in terms of looking down and plants on the side, but I did not hear noise issues coming from your concerns. That is why I'm making this motion that it be changed to say no sound on the rear balcony.
That's your motion. And there's a second from Commissioner Lambert, right? Okay.
Yes.
So, uh, is there anybody who wants to speak to this? Cause I do want to speak to this again. All right. I just, I want to be, yeah, Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah. Just for the record, I, I, Commissioner Reese, I, I very much respect your reading of the evidence. I have reviewed the same evidence and came to the opposite opinion.
Again, that's okay.
The beauty of America, everybody's entitled to reading the evidence.
Right. That's okay.
And, and I, and I will say that my understanding of the motion that I, my understanding of the action, I want to say for the record that my understanding of the action of the commission was that it referred to both balconies, that we were, there was a, there was a, a long discussion about what kind of activities could take place on that balcony. And there was assurances that the activities of the, that the activities were intended to be indoor activities and that the balconies were for staff recreation. And under those circumstances, I understood that there was no reason given, nor was one described for amplification. There was no justification given for amplification on those balconies. And therefore, when I used the plural of balconies, I was referring to and so I'm voting against this motion because I do not believe that it reflects the action taken by the commission. So anybody else? Let's go to a roll call. Sir? Do we have a roll call?
Buddy?
Hey buddy?
Can you learn?
I'll do it.
You learn?
Uh, wait, what's going on here?
They're writing out the, they're, they're learning from our mistakes. They're writing out the condition.
Oh, I like this.
This, this might save us.
Cool.
Yes. I like it.
Yep. I'm gonna vote against them. All right.
Done. We know.
Does everybody understand that this is what we are voting on? Yes. Okay. So I think we're ready for a roll call. We've lost Commissioner Lambert, however. Have we? No, there she is. Okay.
Okay. Let's vote, please.
There we go.
Uh, Jing, yes, Jing. Can't hear?
We can't hear you, Jing. Oh. Can Melissa do roll call?
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Now we see you too. It's Jing, it's Jing. Who we can see, but not hear.
Jing, do you want me to call it?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Fonda Benardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
No.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
No.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pastor?
Yes.
Chair Landris?
Yo.
And so I think we're back. Are we? We are back to where we were. Or we, did that pass?
No, that passed. So now we're on the next agenda item.
Yeah, that did pass. Okay. I apologize. Um, all right. We will then move on.
Let's, let's hope that never happened again.
Yes. And you know what? I'm, I'm gonna say this for the record to, um, I just do want to say this for the record because I think it's important. I trust, I believe, because I believe that this is a great project. I believe that everyone has entered into this with the best of intentions. I believe that we will not ever see a noise complaint from the preschool. I believe that that this project will be a great neighbor for everyone in Santa Monica. And I think this is an opportunity, if we're gonna elect law, to give this applicant and other applicants to demonstrate that even when we're not required to by the letter of the law, we behave in ways that are consistent with surrounding neighborhoods. So I hope that, um, I hope that it won't be an issue and, and I believe that it won't be an issue. And I appreciate that the applicant was rightfully speaking up for her rights under this project. But I also do need to say that this is a sensitive use next door. And I really trust and believe that there will not be a problem. And that there will be mutual respect between the properties. So I think that's, I think that's important to be said. And I, I thank everyone for their patience as we, as we dealt with this. So let's move on to item 7B, 1820 Broadway. Do we have callers in the queue for public comment?
Didn't we just do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. 9A. It's been a day. Uh, we've no public, we've no public hearing. Let's do this again, folks. 1643 12th Street. I'm just really, you know, we're, we're here. All right. This is 1643 12th Street, a DR. And we are gonna start with disclosures and expertises. So let us, I'm gonna just go down the line. Commissioner Fonda Benardi?
Yes, I met on Monday with the owner's representative, Howard Robinson, and I spoke with David Kaplan today.
Okay. Commissioner Fresco?
Sandy Itzkoff called me on November 17th. We had a phone conversation. And I got a call from David Kaplan on November 29th. Somewhere in between those, I got a call from sorry, I'm having the owner's attorney. I'm having a total senior moment.
His, his representative, Howard Robinson?
No, his attorney. Michael Klein. I'm sorry. I just like brain freeze. Michael Klein called me. And then he called me again yesterday and the first time he asked me if I had any questions and I said I didn't because I hadn't seen the report. And then he asked me again. Sandy Itzkoff basically explained to me her issues. And I guess that is all my, oh, and I drove by the property this morning at about 10 o'clock.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah. Four years ago, I went to a fundraiser in one of the units, but I can't remember which unit it was. So I've actually been inside the project. And last Monday, last Monday I spoke to Michael Folonis on the phone. And David Kaplan and I exchanged a number of emails yesterday. And Howard Robinson and I had a conversation today at noon and that's it.
Commissioner Pastor?
Um, I have had two phone conversations with Howard Robinson. Um, and I'm trying to find the dates. I believe one was last week and then one was maybe two or three weeks before that. But I've had, I talked to him twice on the phone.
Okay, Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I had two telephone conversations with Mr. Klein, the attorney for the applicant's, one last week and one today.
Commissioner Reese?
On Monday, the 23rd of November, I had a call, conversation with Howard Robinson regarding the project. Talked to me about what he gave me his elevator pitch on the project. And on Monday night, I went by the site, I walked by the site. And then today I exchanged an, well, an email with Gwen Pugh and David Kaplan about Florida area issues. That's it.
Okay. Um, so I have, I've known Sandy Itzkoff and Jonathan Diamond socially for a number of years, but the relationship does not require, rise to the level that would require a recusal. I attended the same fundraiser, which was in unit two in 2016. In, in 2016, I also attended a dinner at some point that year or the following year in that unit. So I've been in, I've been in the property. On February 25th, Ms. Itzkoff and Mr. Diamond, we had a telephone conversation and they brought to my attention that this DR was eventually coming to, to the commission. And then on in September, I believe it was, we, on September 1st, they reached out, we had a telephone conversation again where they were inquiring about plan, check and process and the applicability of code. And I advised them to contact this, to, to contact staff. I believe we received public comment letter around that time. I've received a number of emails from Mr. Klein, from Mr. Kaplan, from Mr. Pugh and from the Itzkoff Diamonds, which I have forwarded to staff. Uh, and that is the extent of my expertise. So are we ready to, uh, are we ready to go to the presentation? I do want to ask what the timing is, how many minutes for the presentation and how many minutes for public comment, given the number of people in the queue?
Can we have the staff report? Or do we have to do that?
Yeah, we're gonna have the staff report. I just want to, I, I do want the staff report, but I do want, before we just get into it, I'd like to have the city attorney tell us what our timing is.
Right. So since you have more than seven people in the queue, like as Melissa mentioned earlier, the the public comment is automatically reduced to two minutes. The applicant's presentation is reduced from 15 minutes to 10 minutes. And rebuttal time is three minutes.
Is three minutes. Okay. And so since we're going to a short application, applicant presentation, I'm going to similarly ask staff to be mindful of the time limits and we'll, we'll, we'll hear from the, we'll hear from staff.
Great. Thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
And more importantly, can you?
We can.
Okay, great. And you can see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I am, I am having a few wifi issues. So just in case, I want to make sure that there's no issues there. Uh, good evening, Commission. Tony Kim, Principal Planner. I'm pinch hitting for Scott Albright, who is stuck on the East Coast, but will hopefully be coming back soon. For you tonight, staff is recommending the commission approved development review permit 18 ENT dash zero two four three, which would allow the addition of a live workforce, six unit condominium building. The proposed additions would increase FAR from point five to one and staff is up. A little background on the subject site, back in 1989, a DRP, CUP and tentative tract map was approved to construct a new two story with mezzanine, 35 foot tall, six unit artist studio condominium building with an overall FAR of 1.5. Subsequent to the construction of the building, illegal floor area was added, which FAR the building to approximately 1.81. In 2016, clients added on the site and the applicant's, the application do increase the FAR of the building to 1.75. clients added on the site and the applicants, the application, do increase the FAR of the building to 1.75. The subject site on the east side of 12th Street, just north of Olympic Boulevard. It is located in the Industrial Conservation District, uh, on a 7,500-square-foot parcel. The proposed project is to increase the FAR of the building from 1.5 to 1.75, which is the Tier 2 maximum FAR. This table shows you a breakdown of the square footage of each unit, uh, from the 1989-approved DR to what is currently proposed, uh, in the DR for you tonight. Again, it shows you the 1.5 FAR and the proposed increase to 1.75. The additional floor area will all be internal and will be added to five of these six artist studios. There will be no change to the building height, the exterior of the building, or the number of units. Uh, the allocation of the additional proposed floor area between the units was decided by the applicant, the HOA. Uh, there was no city involvement in the allocation or distribution of that floor area. Uh, and the floor plans and calculation of the floor area may change, pending the full plan, not uncommon for projects, uh, that are approved by the planning commission, where due to any number of circumstances, whether it be, uh, comments from other city departments or changes that the applicant wants to make, basically occur at the plan check. Uh, uh, but what will not change is that the overall maximum FAR of 1.75 for the building cannot be exceeded. Uh, and staff will make that determination on the FAR and what counts as floor area. So that is not something that we make a determination on. Uh, for all Tier 2, uh, projects, there are, uh, the provision of community benefits. In this case, the applicable community benefits for this project are the payment of an affordable housing commercial linkage fee, a transportation impact fee, and a parks and recreation development impact fee. Uh, and or just, uh, a summary of some of the findings that need to be made in the affirmative approved the DR. Uh, the application was properly noticed and staff has received nine letters in support of approving the additional FAR to 1.75. Some of the public correspondence, they're all brought up, issues such as how the floor area has been determined. Uh, again, this is something that staff will make the determination on based on, uh, code issues. Um, there has been some issues brought up about the accuracy of the plans. Uh, we can only go by the plans that the applicant has submitted. Uh, issues of egress, uh, has been brought up and that will be something that the Green Department and Fire Department will review during plan check. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the DR and the statement of official action.
Questions? Uh, are there questions? We'll just start with Commissioner Fonda Bernardi. We'll go down the list. So Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Um, yes, I have a conceptual question. Tony, if someone, uh, there's millions of these little lots tucked in Santa Monica, second floors. Someone were to come in and say, I just wanna increase it, uh, and go to the same Tier 2 and pay the fees, could they do that by right today anywhere in a multifamily or other commercial district?
Yeah, it would have to meet code. If, if they are going from a Tier 1 to a Tier 2, they would need a development review permit, uh, do that process and as long as what they're proposing meets, uh, the development standards.
Now, the only real development standard they would be short, potentially in a typical development, would be they might be short on a side yard condition based on which district they were in because you would need a bigger side yard for three stories versus two stories. So in that DRP, they would go for a variance for that. Would that be the acceptable path for someone or someones who wanted to do that?
All right. So are you talking about additional, so you're talking about additional massing as well, not internal floor area within an existing building?
What I'm saying is, someone wants to go to Tier 2 and they would be going from technically a two-story building with mezzanine to a full three-story building. They're not changing the outside of the building. They're exactly where it is. But at the end of the day, they would be, if they were in a multifamily district that has side yards set by the number of stories, they might be short in side yard conditions by doing that infill to get to Tier 2 because they would have a side yard condition that would be different than what would be required for a Tier 1 building. I'm asking, is that an accurate understanding of how you would interpret the code?
Uh, I mean, in this case, the scenario you're describing, it sounds like there would be a building that has existing non-conforming side setbacks then. Um, and we're only looking at an internal addition of floor area.
Well, actually, I'm saying the original building, two stories plus mezzanine, is conforming. It's a, it's a conforming condition, but now someone wants to fill in their loft, make it a full floor, that would need a wider side yard in a multifamily district, R2 or 3. Uh, and they would be non-conforming at that point. They're conforming before they filled in their floor, but they would not be after they filled in their floor. Is that accurate? Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, this is Jane. I'm, I'm not sure.
No, I think the, the, the.
Yeah. Sorry. So Tony, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was saying, uh, I believe the, the scenario that Commissioner Fonda Bernardi is, is bringing up is a, an existing non-conforming building, uh, with existing non-conforming setbacks, where the exterior of the building will not be changing, so.
No, no, what I'm saying is the building is consistent as conforming setbacks, as a two-story building. When it goes up to three stories by filling in a mezzanine, that is adding a floor internal, not changing the outside off, does it then become non-conforming because it would require a wider side yard setback in the R2 or 3 zones?
Well, yeah, so, uh, uh, again, because you're saying it's within a, a hypothetical, like, existing building or not literally adding another story to it. So, so the side yard setback isn't based on the number of stories, so I'm a bit confused by the question. Um, further, in some multi-unit districts like the R2, the maximum is two stories, so it would simply be prohibited, um, in that case. So we, we would have to, it's a little bit hard to talk about in hypothetical because it depends on the zone that, that it's in. Um, and again, the side yard setback is not tied to the number of stories. It's, it's relative to the width of the lot, typically.
Okay. I'll survive. I, I will let it go then.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco? Yeah? You have a question? There you go. Good.
I'm turning the microphone on. I have some battery issues here. Um, so I just wanted to understand a little bit. Um, I spoke with Tony on the phone about a lot of this, but, uh, so this is a code compliance issue that's been open since 2016. And, uh, so what took so long, first of all? I mean, how do we have a code compliance issue that kinda sits there for so?
Yeah, in this case, you know, there's, in quite an effort to try to get, um, well, the application was submitted in 2018. Uh, and since the application was submitted, we've been trying to work with the applicants and other parties to get a complete set of plans in drawing, uh, which has taken quite some time. Um, so there's, it's, it's just been a process.
I see. Um, and I have one other question, which is if they continue to have difficulties and this, we approve this, but they can't do all the work and it remains non-compliant, then what?
Well, there is a condition in the, uh, statement of official action that lays out a timeline as to when they will need to, uh, pull their permits and complete construction. So there, there is a timeline there, a deadline they would have to meet.
And then what?
Uh, well, then we would have to continue with the enforcement procedures.
Okay. Um, so, hold on, I'm just looking at my notes. Okay, that was, that pretty much answers all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
I have a bunch of questions. I can ask a few now and a few later if you want. It's up to you.
Go for it. Just ask them.
Just stop, stop me if you get tired of my.
Well, now you're frozen.
No, I am not. Um, he may have already asked this question, but for my own, um, edification and the applicants and what have you, I wanna make sure, very sure that we understand from you what our authority is here. My understanding that our authority is limited to setting the FAR for this site. It does not, it does not include intervening in the homeowners association or disputes among homeowners or anything other than setting the FAR for this site. And anything that happens after tonight is not basically our business as long as they comply. Am I correct? Incorrect?
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay.
Um, and Tony, I asked you today, um, and maybe others would like to hear your answer. Um, Gwen Pugh submitted some plans and some revised square footages of the units. And I know you met with him or talked to him. And what was your conclusion of, um, of his conclusion?
Sure. Uh, they, he brought up an, an issue with the, uh, method of calculating floor area and brought up a few, um, cases where they felt that floor area counted, um, what mechanical rooms. And we informed him that, uh, per code, that those mechanical rooms do count as floor area. Um, now, he also had a question about the, uh, stairways and how we calculate floor areas of stairways and that there should be, um, an exclusion of floor area for the stairway landings at the top and bottom of the stairs. Uh, and upon further analysis, we agreed that, uh, the minimum building code required landing of a three-foot by three-foot area at the top and bottom of the stairways could be excluded from the, uh, FAR calculations, uh, which we also pass that information on to the applicant. Um, and they can adjust their plans accordingly in plan check.
Okay, thank you. Um, also, there's been some question about the, the dimensions and, um, you know, some controversy about that, which is, again, really not our issue. Um, but when they go for a building permit, assuming they all do, won't the building department require exact dimensions? So theoretically, there would be a licensed architect. So there is some dispute, which is not our business, about the dimensions within these units. Um, we'll take care of that.
Yes, those will have to be accurate plans in plan check. Correct.
Uh, another question related to that, on page four of the staff report, you have, um, new square footages for the units in the building and those were submitted to you by the homeowners association, right? Tony?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear that last question?
The, on page four of the staff report, you, you have, you have projected square footages of all six units and those were submitted to you by the homeowners association, right?
Yes, that's.
Can you guys hear me?
Uh, yes, I can hear you. I, I think Tony may be having some wifi issues, but yes, that is correct. HOA as the applicant, yes.
Yes, that's correct.
But those square footages are not locked in stone, correct? They're not, they're not in the STOWA. They basically could change based on new dimensional information, what have you. Those are just theoretical at this point based on the HOA.
Yes, that's.
I just wanna make sure that we're not, no, we're not locking the square footages into the units, which is really not our bailiwick.
That is correct.
Okay. And then Howard Robinson raised a point about a conflict between city and state law about workspaces being on the first floor versus resolved.
So that is an issue that will be adjudicated appropriately by the building officer in plan check. Um, and that is not something within the purview of the planning commission tonight.
Okay, so we will just wait for that to happen?
That is right. That, that, that will be addressed as part of the plan check process.
And then, again, the egress issues could be handled, um, after we take our action, right? It's not part of what we're talking about tonight.
Again, those are, those are building code and fire code issues that are not, um, within the purview of the commission either.
Okay, and then finally, it relates to my first question, in terms of the distribution of impact fees, um, the square footage of the units, da-da-dah. That is you, that is not within our authority. The distribution of the impact fees is up to the homeowners association, correct?
Right. Similar to the, the floor area of the building, the impact fees would be, um, would be calculated based on the total floor area of the building, not, uh, the, the city is not involved in how those, you know, where the money comes from or what have you. It's, it is a total fee for the added floor area.
So again, in, in conclusion, we're, we're basically looking at this as one piece of property. A, an FAR, we're allowing an FAR and we are setting impact fees and that, the day is done for us after that, correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Pastor? Commissioner Raskin?
No questions.
Commissioner Reese? Okay. Thank you. I saw you, I saw you shaking your head. Um, okay, so I just wanna go back to, um, Commissioner Lambert's question about, um, our purview here. And, um, Heidi and Jane, you, you and I have discussed this, uh, at great length, but something in the staff report made me, um, uh, less clear. Uh, we saw, we, there is a slide in the staff report where you actually were showing us floor area for specific units. Um, can you confirm that our findings or the staff report, uh, we are not taking a position on the floor area allocated to any individual unit? Is that correct? We are, we're approving, if we approve this, we're approving a 1.75 FAR, but the specific allocation of floor area, we're not taking a position on that. Is that correct?
That, 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 that is correct. The statement of official action does not include a, a floor allocation table. There, there are certainly plans that are part of the approval, but just like any other building that you look at, you know, it is, um, a, a conceptual representation of, you know, how, how a building might represent that floor area. It certainly doesn't lock in, um, you know, that forever. Um, further, there is a, um, there's a condition in the STOWA that allow, also allows for minor amendments with the director's approval. That provision is there for us, um, as we always do when, when the commission approves projects. When they move into plan check, you know, there, there are always gonna be situations where, uh, you know, there's some, some walls might, might need to be moved around, as long as it does not violate the planning commission's approval in totality and it is not a major amendment. Um, you know, those things are, are dealt with, um, as a minor amendment to the plans.
Okay.
Those things happen in construction drawings.
Thank you. And so I wanna just follow that up, just for absolute clarity, ahead of public comment and, and, and the, and ahead of the applicant's presentation. Um, we've received a numerous public comments making reference to somehow legalizing existing floor area and, um, and sort of redetermining which floor area is approved and which isn't. We are not, we, again, just to be absolutely clear, 1.75 FAR, we are not taking a position on which floor area counts for the 1.75. That is, um, there's no pre, uh, there would be no pre-authorization of specific floor area. Is that correct?
That's right, right. That's correct. Yeah, what the commission is looking at is the difference between a project that was approved in 1989 legally, um, you know, with 1.5 and, you know, between that and what is the maximum allowed in 2020.
Okay, and I, I just, I know that Commissioner Lambert asked some of these questions, but I really want to get clear. Finally, um, can we confirm that the public comment we received asking, and Tony brought this up, about the, the stairwells and the mechanical room? Again, we're not taking a position on those, on those tonight. That's beyond our purview. But is, are this, is the square footage at issue sufficiently small that it would fall within the planning director's adjudicatory authority? Those issues that we're writing?
Yeah, the issues that are being raised are about basically how you apply the zoning ordinance. And, you know, basically that's, that's within, you know, uh, certainly my, my role as zoning administrator and the planning director's role, um, you know, to administer the code and interpret the code. And, you know, those are issues, um, basically, you know, we, we have, uh, you know, members of the public, unit owners, who are asking for clarification on how that is applied. Um, and, you know, we provided that interpretation and it will be applied in plan check.
Okay, and then finally, um, can you just explain for the record, so it's all clear to everybody? Um, the, the owners, there, the, uh, ownership of this parcel is, uh, each individual owner owns each individual unit, but they are also shareholders in the HOA. Um, and so the applicant of. And so the applicant of record is in fact the HOA, irrespective of the ownership status of the individual unit. So I just would like, if you can clarify that for us, so we understand who has standing here as an applicant, because we will be, I understand we'll be hearing public comment, we may be hearing public comment from individual unit owners who do not enjoy the same status as the applicant, and I just want to hear upfront why that is.
That is correct. The HOA is the applicant for this application, as representing the association. Obviously, the city is not involved in how the association makes its rules, how they govern themselves. We are reasonably relying on representations from the HOA as the applicant for this project.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there other, Mario, I saw your hand briefly. Did you want to ask a question?
We can get it to discussion. We get into discussion, we can deal with it.
Okay, that's great. I apologize for rehearsing these questions, but I think it's important to lay out the parameters. Commissioner Pastor?
I'm just going to say that I shortly am going to be turning off my camera, because I am going to be eating dinner, but I will be continuing to listen and participate in the hearing. There's no question.
Let us go to the applicant who has 10 minutes and three minutes reserved for rebuttal. There was a potential that the applicant wanted to reserve additional time for rebuttal, which would require a suspension of the rules. So before the applicant begins speaking, does the applicant wish the commission to change your allocation of time before you begin speaking? Do you want to shift any time to your rebuttal? Because we have to vote on that.
No, we don't want to shift any time.
Okay, great. So the floor is yours for 10 minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, let me set my timer. I am Howard Robinson. I'm a land use consultant. I'm representing the applicant, 1643 12th Street Homeowners Association. The applicant will, team tonight will present, will consist of Attorney Michael Klein, HOA board member Lauren Dubak, and me. I'll go first. I'll take about four, four and a half minutes, and then they will go, and we recognize this has been reduced to 10 minutes. This is a unique building, coming to you with a relatively straightforward request. We're seeking approval of the DRP and Tier Two project, which will allow a 1.75 FAR and a three-story building. The purpose of this request is to allow the homeowners within the building to apply retroactively for building permits to legalize some square footage that was added in prior years without permits. At this point, I was planning to go carefully through each of the required findings, because really, this is the issue before you tonight. Do you agree with staff's recommended findings or not? But because we're cutting time and staff's findings are good and thorough, and I assume you've read them all, I will not go over the findings, but I just want to remind everybody that as far as we're concerned, that's really what we're here to discuss. I want to outline several reasons that I believe you should approve this request. First of all, the project does meet all the required findings for the DRP, and they're outlined for you very ably in the staff report. Second, the project will meet all the requirements of a Tier Two status, all the development standards, including the payment of community benefit fees. Third, the project will cause no negative impacts on neighbors. Envelope of the building will not be changing, and it's been there since 1992. No additional height is proposed, nothing built-in required side yards, no extra density, no reduction in existing parking, nothing that could have a negative impact on neighbors. And finally, this building, as proposed, meets all the requirements for a Tier Two building, and just the same as any applicant could come in and propose a new building exactly this size and would meet all the requirements of a Tier Two. We're not asking for any variance or waivers of any of the development standards for a standard Tier Two building in this zone. Now, the mirror side of that, why you should approve it, the mirror side is why you should not deny it. To deny it would force five out of six of these homeowners to rip out existing square footage, and this, in my opinion, would be an unreasonable hardship relative to the crime, if you will, of having built some internal area without permits. Had the HOA come forward earlier and asked for a Tier Two project and been approved, which presumably would have been fairly non-controversial, then all of this floor area could have been built. So to some extent, it's a problem of timing, but I don't want to underplay the seriousness of building without a permit. It's not a good thing, and we've paid dearly for that mistake. Even with all these arguments, I know that the commission is wary of setting a precedent... Somebody warn me at four minutes, if you could, please.
Okay, you've got six minutes.
I know the commission is wary of setting a precedent like this and allowing retroactive approvals of space built without a permit. So I want to outline why I think this project is unique, and you will not see a flood, if any, applications similar to this. First of all, the building is unique as an artist live-work condo project in an industrial zone. There are none others like this that I'm aware of, and the code, and you're not likely to see any more being built, because the current code prohibits residential uses now in the industrial conservation zone, except for 100% affordable housing. Second, these retroactive cases are rare, and one reason is that planning staff acts as your buffer. If a case doesn't pass the smell test, staff tells applicant that they are not going to support their application, and most potential applicants hear that, decide to not pursue a discretionary planning approval path. Finally, in my experience, retroactive cases like this usually occur when someone has added new building mass, someone has reduced a required feature, such as required parking, or someone has increased the intensity of the use. For example, converting a retail storefront into restaurant use or a gym. And we haven't done any of those things in this case, and that goes back to the earlier argument of nothing here causes any negative impacts on neighbors. So I would like to mention public support. We did not have a current count. It is somewhat difficult in the COVID area to go door-to-door and try to get supporters from your neighbors. But two neighbors did come in from businesses on the block. They were after the noon deadline today, and they both say they're fine with this. They don't see any negative impacts. So in conclusion, I would ask for your approval of our application. We're comfortable with all the conditions detailed in the staff report. So we're happy with the staff recommendation and urge your approval. So next, I would like to bring up Attorney Michael Klein.
Take off all this stuff. We're here together, so we're doing the social distancing thing. Michael Klein, law firm of Klein &amp; Weiss. I'm really here just to address the allocation issue, which you really don't even need to consider. But the allocation issue, we know that you're human beings, and you want to hear that we're fair, and we are fair. So we had two law firms, my own law firm, Klein &amp; Weiss, and also Michael Rapkin of the fine firm of Wolf, Rifkin, Shapiro, Schulman, Rapkin LLP. Both take a look at the documents and the law. And the documents and the law are clear that the division of something like this has to be done on an equal basis. So each unit here was given the same additional square footage, and even if there is a further change to add or subtract more square footage, things will be done the same way. So this is objectively fair, and in fact, arguably, it is more than fair to the person who's objecting in unit number two, because that is one of the two smallest units in the complex by square footage. So if they want to say, well, we should get a greater percentage of the square feet, that's obviously not fair. So our position would be that this is, if you want to consider this, which you should not, the staff has told you don't need to, and this is not an issue, but this is being done in a very fair way, and a more than fair way, and that will continue. Let me turn it now over to Lauren Dubak, who's with the association.
Okay, great. So my name is Lauren Dubak. I am a member of the HOA. My husband and I are the last original owners in this building. We've lived and worked there for over 25 years. I think those of you who've driven by, it's a very unique building, very industrial building on an industrial street. It was built for artists to work and live, and it's not everybody's taste, but for those of us who've been there a long time, we absolutely loved being there. Most of the current residents inherited these modifications. Nobody is here to say that they're not responsible for them. All owners know that we are responsible for these modifications. We've been working with city staff for over four years to try to make this right, and we're really happy to be here tonight. I'm just briefly, we'll acknowledge that there's conflict in the building. I hope that's not something that concerns you. If it does, I'm happy to answer anything about it. I just want to give you an idea of who we are. We're not using these units to start businesses. We're not developers. This is a very small group of creative people, mostly writers and filmmakers, who you want, you don't work in the places that we own, and we would like to continue to be able to do that. To reiterate, Howard, that box that stood in 1992 stands exactly as it is today, and we don't want to make any changes to that. We have a great relationship with the businesses on the street, have looked after each other for years. On the other hand, if you deny this application tonight, it's just disastrous hardship for the owners. I recognize what we're asking, and I'm humbly asking you on behalf of this community that I love, in spite of everything that's going on there, asking for your approval so we can continue to take the steps necessary to make this right. Thank you very much.
Okay. So that concludes the applicant presentation.
Okay, let's go to questions, and we will start with Commissioner Reese. Do you have any?
I don't think I have any questions right now.
Okay. Commissioner Raskin?
No questions.
Commissioner Pastor? No questions. Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
No questions.
Commissioner Fresco? Commissioner Undebert?
Just one question. The units that we're seeing, they were measured by some staff of yours or some other firm who come up with the numbers we're looking at?
Yes, the HOA hired a local designer, somebody that I've worked professionally for approximately 20 years. He went into five out of six of the units and very carefully measured. As you've already heard, this case has been around for quite a while, and so as we received more determinations from staff on very technical little questions of how to treat stairways or mechanical rooms or other specific items, the plans kept getting tighter and more accurate, and we feel that the plans for five out of six of the units are very accurate. But of course, they are schematic architectural plans, and as staff has already said, there may be some small changes as the individual units go to plan check. And we just heard yesterday of a change in the staff determination on how to calculate the square area, the square footage of a stairway. It's a fairly de minimis change, but we will incorporate this into the plans before individual owners go forward. The one unit that did not elect to participate with the others, they've hired their own people, and we've seen their plans, and we cannot vouch for them, but they'll be going through plan check, and that'll all be checked.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to, I do not have any questions myself. Are we ready to go to the public hearing? So let's go to the public comment, and we are on two-minute comments, if I am not mistaken. So, and as a reminder, we have, I believe, this is the first night where we have donated time, so I just want to make sure that staff is verifying that the donor is present in the queue, and that we're alerted to when that is happening. So with that, let's open the public comment.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Our first caller will be Chris Carter. Chris, you are now off mute. You are live in the meeting. You have two minutes to speak. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm going to speak, I can't speak to the legal or technical issues, so I'm going to speak to my personal issues, and I want to thank everybody for taking the time to get some perspective on the DRP issues at 1643 12th Street. I'm going to read for you now. I have occupied one of the six spaces in the building since 2004, when I bought my unit as-is. I have used it as a live-work space as a writer, director, and producer. I wrote the final two seasons of The X-Files here over the past five years, and have rented space in the neighborhood for post-production on both occasions. So it's been a very good base of operations for my business, as well as businesses in the neighborhood. I would be sorry to vacate the building, but please know that it would be a real possibility. If I were to lose my kitchen, as well as my valuable workspace, it would devalue my property, cost me hundreds of thousands of dollars, and make it unusable for my purposes, or anyone's if they wanted a true live-work space. As I'm sure you know, the larger neighborhood houses, production offices, have very high-profile Hollywood producers, including J.J. Abrams and Jerry Bruckheimer. In fact, it was one of the buildings owned by Bruckheimer I recently rented, and the area is growing with these kinds of professionals, I'm sure, and many thanks to you. At 1643 12th Street, we're a perfect fit for Hollywood West. What I hope not to see is the personal animus of one owner change the nature of the building simply for change's sake. I could go on, but suffice to say, these DRP issues, as I see them, are complicated by personal politics. For five of the owners, all we want to do is to protect the building and find peace. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next caller in the queue is Mike Godecki. Mike, you are now off mute. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes.
Great. Hi, my name is Mike Godecki, and I hope the city council will vote to approve the DRP. My wife and I have been in Santa Monica residence for well over 25 years. My wife Lisa has supported the community with her role as a registered nurse in helping with the PTA. My business in the post-production entertainment field has made Santa Monica its home since its inception 26 years ago. My family of three love our lot in this small six-unit building. I have dreamed of such a space since I was very young. I never thought I would find a space until luckily that day in 1997, when my broker took me to see it. This was the place I'd always dreamed about, but it was very expensive at the time. Purchasing this unit stretched our finances, but compared to today's prices, it would still then possible for a working-class family to afford a condo in Santa Monica. I am so grateful we were able to make it happen and be owners of this rare live-work lot. My wife gave birth to our son in 2006. He has been raised in this magical place, our unit. Like the others, had extra square footage when we bought it, because we bought it as-is. If further square footage is needed to be removed, it would be too small for a family of three and a workspace. Facing this gut-wrenching decision to sell our unit because it's too small will be a true tragedy. But what will be nearly impossible is finding another live-work space that will fit our needs. I think the worst part of the community will be the loss of a really talented nurse. I know it will be very sad for my wife's patients when she has to tell them she will no longer be doing cancer treatments in Santa Monica. They will truly miss her expertise, warmth, and generosity. I pray that the city council will find in their hearts and compassion to vote to pass this DRP and allow my family to legalize our unit as purchased and stay living in Santa Monica. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Godecki. Lisa, you are now off of mute, and you are live in the meeting. You have two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Lisa Godecki, and I hope that the city council votes to approve the DRP. So I'm going to read, just to make it all quick. I have lived in unit number one since 1998. I'm a registered nurse and have worked for both St. John Hospital and UCLA. Currently, I'm doing oncology nursing at UCLA here in Santa Monica. I have been working all through COVID without any days off during lockdown. It is hard work, but I love patient care and bringing healing to people with cancer. My son Sean was born in 2006 at UCLA and has been raised in Santa Monica, going to our wonderful parks, beaches, and schools since he was a baby. We love Santa Monica and hope to stay here. I feel like we are the perfect family to be in this unit, capturing the intention of why it was first built. The loft provides my artist husband, son and myself a unique work-living experience designed perfectly for our needs. My son wants to be a filmmaker and he is being taught the tools from my filmmaker husband. Having the workspace on our bottom floor allows them to do shoots and stop-motion videos and then edit those videos with their workstation on the kitchen floor. Basically, the whole house is them doing their art. Um, we are good people and we contribute to the well-being and success of the community. Had I ever thought the extra square footage was going to be an issue, I would have never bought the unit, but it was too perfect for our needs to pass up. Hopefully now we can legalize what we bought and make good on our mistake. I beg the city council to please grant us this DRP request. Passing this DRP will allow my family to stay in our unit and continue to be contributing members of the wonderful Santa Monica community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Diamond. Jonathan, you are now off of mute and you're live in the meeting. You have two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Um, my wife and family, uh, live with me in unit two at 1643 12th Street. Um, and I understand the commission's reticence to get involved in the internal allocations, but um, I think it, there is something worthy of note. Um, we have been cited, those of us in the, in the building who've been cited by the city have been cited as individuals. Um, but we've been unable to resolve our citations individually, having to, uh, having to rely instead on the community of the homeowners association. Um, that is why we are, um, advocating for, uh, the commission to legalize as part of its, um, judgment, the existing space in the unit. Um, based on the allocation, uh, as it's been conceived, um, the passage of the DRP as it stands now would create a market for sale and allow some unit owners to profit from, um, essentially what had been transgressions by past owners, um, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. As a result, um, we're asking you to substitute in Gwen Pugh's corrected plans into the DRP. Um, they bring the building, in fact, under the 1.75 FAR and we had a very good meeting with staff and, um, it sounds like even Howard Robinson is in agreement on that. And secondly, we would ask you to approve the 1.75 FAR and explicitly make legal the existing unpermitted square footage in the building. Um, this is in fact, a request that's been made by other owners in the building. Commission has before it, uh, the staff recommendation as well as alternate actions, um, which I understand are unusual and I would encourage you to consider the alternate actions before, um, passing this on to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese, other question. Sorry, wait, do we still have Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, wait.
Commissioner Reese has a question for Mr. Diamond.
Mr. Diamond, are you still there?
I am, yes.
Okay, great. I just want to ask you a question. The way I'm hearing this is you're gonna have your opportunity to get more accurate drawings in there when you go through the building permit process. Um, is that your understanding?
We, it is our understanding. We have been asking, however, for a pre-plan check, uh, so that we can sort of determine what space was available before we went to that, uh, prior to the planning commission's, um, judgment on, on the application.
Well, I'm, you know, okay, that, that's a, a nice statement. You've had six, four years to correct this, so you're asking us to now delay this at this point. Um, but anyways, I think that was my main question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, let's keep going.
Our next caller is Rosie Diamond. Rosie, you're now off mute and you're live in the meeting. You have two minutes for comments.
Thank you. Um, hello, Commissioner. My name is Rosie Diamond. I'm 16 and I've lived in unit two at 1643 12th Street for over six years, almost as far back as I can remember. My parents moved here so that I could attend Crossroads School and not drive what was sometimes an hour and 45 minutes to get home at night. I've been at Crossroads since first grade. I'm speaking to ask you to proceed in a thoughtful, truth-speaking, justice-minded way. I'm the person that this meeting was the most to lose. I've looked at the plan that was sent to you by my neighbors. If it gets approved, as it is, forget the fact that our architect says it does not follow the law, it would mean that my bedroom would be demolished. No one else has to remove anything. Please understand these numbers. They are intentionally confusing. It does not have to be this way. The building actually fits properly on the site. Please approve the plan that allows all of the existing historic space to stay. Please save my bedroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is, can we have the next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Sandy Itkoff. Sandy, you are now.
Sandy, you are live.
I send you of two minutes. Welcome.
Two minutes. Welcome.
And Sandy, you may want to turn off your.
Sandy, you may want to turn off your.
Hello?
Sandy, are you with us? You're live in the meeting. You have two minutes for comment.
My phone stopped working.
Okay, go ahead. I'll start your timer now.
I know this is complex and I appreciate it. Um, my name is Sandy Itkoff. I'm a documentary filmmaker. Uh, I produce documentary films from my home here and have for the entire six years we've lived here. Um, uh, we've been frustrated because we've had no voice. I think the question of why we're waiting. A ream of emails printed out where we asked for these changes for this investigation and we were told, I can't. Of the HOA because we're trying to keep costs down. So we attempted over and over to have our voice.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Yeah.
Can, um, could we, could we, uh?
There's two others to, 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 to confirm his work and, uh, there's no controversy here. Uh, Gwen's plans, the final column of Gwen's plans that show what Howard Robinson and city staff just stated that they would accept is 1,000, is 13,039 square feet and that is below the 1.75 FAR. So the building fits on the site. So we, I would implore you to adopt those plans because if you don't, there will be a lot of controversy and jugging over what doesn't, doesn't count. City Board, uh, David Kaplan and Michael, uh, have all agreed that this is the right number. So please, secondarily, um, we're asking you to make a condition, not, to be clear, not state what floor area goes in what unit, but simply state that existing floor area gets the first, uh, amounts of square footage from the FAR and get that, it's, you give them that well within it, it's 86 extra square feet that, uh, can go to the HOA to decide what to do with. But, um, we believe that, first of all, we are the only unit that would be under construction. We are the only unit that has been sort of put into a box to remove square footage and we talk all about controversy in the building, but it's. Michael Klein, who just spoke, actually works for the two owners who are selling their, their square footage. He doesn't work for the HOA, so it's odd that he's there. Um, and we're debating HPA law, but our lawyer does not agree with him. Um, but what we're asking you to do is very simple, to please adopt the plans that Gwen put forward that both the city agrees with, Howard agrees with, we agree with, 13,039 square feet. And then make a simple condition that says the existing historical floor area, which fits.
I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, that's, that's your two minutes.
Okay, I'm, we're, we're, we've had some problems hearing. Um, so there was, at about 30 seconds in, we, we completely missed what, what you said. So I'm gonna ask the question, which is, what did you say before, when, at the time that we lost you, 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 it was between about 10 seconds in and 30 seconds in. I'm assuming you had a prepared statement.
I did. I'm sorry. I, I was, I'm having a little bit of issues with my headset. Um, what I said was, is that there's no controversy about adopting, uh, Gwen Pugh's measurement of 13,039 square feet. That does not include, that, that is the agreed, um, amount that the city has said with the flow that works. It is what Howard Robinson just said to you is appropriate and it cuts out an entire amount of controversy that will embroil us if we can't just say, this is what's the code. Michael looked at it. David Kaplan looked at it. Uh, Gwen calculated it. This is the right number. It follows code. So that was number one. So I implore you to pass this, but adopt those plans. Um, and then number two, um, I'm at, was asking for you to state, not, not to say what, 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 um, floor area goes into what unit. We clearly understand that is not your purview, but what we're asking is that you condition this by saying that, uh, the, uh, FAR gets applied first to existing square footage. We paid for this square footage when we bought our home, um, and now we're being asked to pay for it again to the do-backs, Lauren who spoke to you and another owner, Mr. Klein represents them. He doesn't work for the HOA, so it was odd that he was speaking. But, um, but we don't believe that we should pay for them twice. Um, we do believe that the existing square footage should stay in the building and if you can, uh, see to it, to just condition and say, yes, first, the first, first pass is existing stays in.
Uh, thanks, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Uh, Commissioner Lambert has a question for you.
I have, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is you said that Michael Folonis had signed off on Gwen Pugh's interpretation of floor area. Do you have that in writing?
Yes, we do and we sent it to the city.
What I have in writing from Michael Folonis says that, um, he suggests a survey to actually get an accurate floor area measurement. That it be agreed.
Right, he said, oh, sorry. So yes, what he said was, um, I have, I have a, an email from him that says that he agrees with it, which I forwarded to the city. And then he said, if there's controversy about it, hire an independent surveyor to measure. Because one of the issues is that on the plans that you see on the cover sheet of what was submitted, um, it's not a licensed architect that prepared them and it says that no one is taking responsibility for their accuracy, that, um, the applicant does not take responsibility. So.
Thank you, thank you. You answered my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. Are there other, can you, can you, I, I actually would like to ask you a question. You've said a couple of things that, um, I haven't seen clearly in the record. Um, and, uh, Rosie alluded to this. Um, and you say that you're asking for existing square footage to be permitted, um, which, which may be beyond our purview. I just want to understand, the room to which she referred, was that room permitted with the original, uh, development, the original permit for the building? Did that bedroom exist at the time the building was built?
We don't actually have, uh, final plans for the building. Um, what we have are the first set of plans that were submitted and Tony Kim explained to us at the very beginning of this process that those probably aren't the final plans because they always change. So we don't really know what was final. And, um, we have an area in particular that was cited and everybody has areas in particular that were cited, um, and that's what we're talking about. Uh, the area that in particular that's cited, if it can, if it can remain as existing. And if it's in with the 1.75 FAR, all existing could stay in.
I will have questions for staff. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next caller.
Okay, our next caller is Gwen Pugh. Gwen, you are now live in the meeting. You're off mute. You have two minutes for comment.
Hello, um, I am Gwen Pugh, a local architect and I'm speaking on behalf of unit two. The livework lofts by Gary are a wonderful, creative housing, living, alternative and addition to the city. However, uh, because of the nature of the way they were designed, stuff got built. But of course, it needs to be code and not a ghost ship. So it does need to get legalized. What's there now? Uh, our analysis of the areas, after discussion with the methodology with the staff, uh, indicates that in fact, the areas will fall under the tier-two FAR limit. So what we're asking for is to, for you to pass tier-two, but to have a condition that essentially determines that existing area be, uh, permitted and legalized prior to any other additions, changes or other, uh, enhancements to the space. So in other words, the real purpose of this is to make what's there, uh, appropriate and legal. Please approve tier-two. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert has a question.
Uh, Gwen, I have a question. I, I understood from staff, I, I read your, um, your new chart on square footage and look at the plans, that only one of the two, um, areas that you pointed out were allowable under the zoning code to be, uh, not counted as floor area. And that's from Jane who administers. And that area that is allowed to be excluded from floor areas, the landing for the stairways, but the mechanical closet is included in floor area and that's the way we do it. So do you not agree with that?
Uh, that is the city's determination. Uh, I believe that it still will comply the plans that I received uh, from Howard Robinson and the HOA that, uh, that, uh, e- even if only the landings were taken out uh, and the mechanicals rooms were included in the FAR. Um, but, uh, you know, I think that's still up for discussion, but nevertheless, I think that, uh, the, the building as a whole, obviously, everything has to be double-checked, cross-checked and checked again. Uh, and we understand that, but as of this reading.
Building process, right?
Right, right. Sorry, I missed that last bit.
That will happen in, during plan check.
That will happen during plan check, correct.
Thank you.
So I, any other questions for Mr. Pugh? Cause I have a follow-up. So I'm, I'm, I want to ask a very specific question, um, related to Commissioner Lambert's question. If you base, because the, what we heard from the applicant is that they intend to incorporate this new finding from the city regarding the landings into their calculation. The HOA said that they would incorporate it into the calculation. But it's been made clear that the unit you represent is working individually with the city. So we are not adjudicating between units. If the vertical landing is incorporated and the mechanical room stays out, do the problems that the, your clients represented in their previous comments, uh, get resolved or not?
To the best of my knowledge, they would be resolved.
They would be resolved with, without counting the landing, but with counting the mech room. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. We can keep going. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, our last speaker is Michael Jimenez and he is part of the time donation pair. So I'm first going to check in with his time donor, Deborah Cunningham. Deborah, you are off mute. Would you please confirm that you're just here in the meeting and that you are donating your two minutes to Michael?
Yes, I am indeed here and I am indeed donating my time.
Thank you very much. And Michael, you are now live in the meeting. Um, after Deborah's donation, you have four minutes to speak. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Uh, Michael Jimenez, Land Use Consultant, Santa Monica. Uh, I represent the interests of Sandra and Jonathan, um, the owners of unit two. Um, I wanted to, uh, focus. I wanted to focus on the errors in the DRP application. And those errors are in the building statistics. And that is why the client and and Mr. Pugh are suggesting that we substitute the project plans that he has prepared, the floor area calculations for the, from the ones that are currently in place. The reason that we're strongly pushing for that is that, as Commissioner Lambert mentioned, even though they are conceptual representations, the draft STOA, of course, in condition number 10, says that this approval is for those plans dated November 9th, which we now know are not correct. And so we're our concern is that if the if the plans are not changed, that that presents a factual error in this in these proceedings, and we obviously wish to avoid that. Secondarily, the the HOA, as the applicant gave my client assurances dating back to September of 2016, that the the HOA had this had voted to grandfather in all of the square feet that had been added without the HOA's approval or without city approval. It's based on that reliance, the reliance on that representation is now going to be diminished because the HOA, as you know, as Mr. Klein has already stated, is has basically sold portions of density to certain members in the certain unit owners. And as a result, it leaves Unit Two with a 144 square foot reduction. We think that is detrimental to the separate property interests of Unit Two owners and is based upon factual errors that are now in the record. And and if you don't substitute, will basically be prejudicial against my client. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Michael, I want to understand you quickly. Are you saying that if we were to accept even though staff has advised otherwise, all of the area that Gwen Pugh has said should not count toward floor area? That that is your, that is your position, right? That those areas should not be counted, the mechanical room and the landings. So, so, okay, I just make that clear. The staff has said otherwise.
But I have, I have a further follow up question. Michael, are you saying that once those areas get legally deducted in the plan check area, you still end up having a 144 square foot deficit in that unit?
No, I'm representing that the 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 HOA, even though there is not an approval from the city, have gone out and divided up the the density that they are hoping the city approves. And they have not given that density to my client. And as a result, they're going to be able to not have to demolish some of any of their square feet. But my client would have to demolish 144 square feet.
And is the implication here that other owners are getting square footage that they will then be able to expand into their unit with?
They'll, they're getting square feet that they will, they are proposing to sell to other owners and and obtain a monetary benefit, including members of the board.
I'm, so, so it would force your client, your client will get an equal share of the square footage, but then have to buy 144 square feet from some other interest within the building is what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, I have one more question.
Okay. Well, I'll ask, and then we'll go to you. Because so Mr. Pugh said that if the square footage for the vertical landing is not counted and the mech room is counted, that that will resolve the issue for Unit Two. And now I'm hearing something different. So can you unpack that for us? I don't know, was that your question? Because I'm hearing two different things. Okay. Mr. Jimenez, did you hear my question?
No, no, there was, I thought somebody was talking over you, but I couldn't.
Okay, I'll ask again. So you've represented that under the current, the current draft STOA, your client would lose 144 square feet, or your client would have to purchase 140 square for square feet. But Mr. Pugh, who also represents your client, has said that if the vertical landing square footage is taken away and the mech room is included in the FAR, that that would be okay, that would preserve the space for your client. And so that would be fine. So I'm just really confused because I'm hearing from one representative that it's okay, and I'm hearing from another representative that it's not. And I would really like to know which it is.
Yeah, and he also added that that if you make, if you condition in the STOA that the the first priority for the the 1.75 FAR is to legalize or to allow the applicants to legalize the square footage that is currently in their units, that in combination with Mr. Pugh's calculations would would resolve this issue.
But that would essentially.
Can we?
Yeah, I was gonna say, but that that would, that would be, that would the planning commission would be then taking sides and essentially rewarding.
We don't have authority over this issue.
Exactly. Exactly, so I'm, that's what I'm misunderstanding the request because we, we, it's not our purview to allocate that those that square footage.
We're not asking you to allocate, we're saying that.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, you are.
No, the the representation of the the planning commission would be to basically say that the purpose of this application was to legalize square footage that was already built. What has happened is the applicant has taken that, and instead, they have, they have turned this into a fire sale of square feet that the city hasn't has not even approved.
But we do not, that is a building and safety issue. We cannot say this is how the square foot footage should be looked at first or second. That is purely a building and safety issue.
And when I ask you which square footage, when I ask Mr. Pugh, maybe you have this information. I asked what original square footage was approved when the building was originally built. You don't have plans that tell us what was original, what was original.
We still don't have authority to decide which square footage gets counted first. We just don't, I mean, and Heidi, please, like, jump in if I'm wrong. But I don't think we have that authority.
I don't think we do either, but I would be, I was curious to know what the Gary, the original Gary building was, because that's the.
So it depends on. That's the recordation.
Let's move on.
Sorry, go ahead, and I.
Somebody said let's move on, so I didn't know if I.
You can answer the question. And we'll go to Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Fonda Barnardi.
Okay, so we looked at the the recordation at the county and what the what each owner pays taxes on. And that has been in effect since the building was adopted. We use that as our base for what what was in the building initially. That is 11,576 square feet. That is over the 1.5 FAR that was originally approved in the 1989 Development Review Permit. And it's, it's not consistent with what the applicant is saying exists today, which is 11,036 feet.
But the way that the, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the way that the assessor counts square feet is not the same as the way it's building and safety counts square feet. So it may be that when Gary originally built the building, that the square footage that the assessor has is different. But that's because there, I mean, depending on, it's very complicated, but depending on who is measuring square foot and for what purpose, it will change for the exact same building.
Right, but the recordation that the assessor is relying on is from 1992. And it's based upon the record, the recording of the condominium plan that was that was approved after the certificate of occupancy was issued for the building.
I don't, that's not responsive to Commissioner Pastor's point. Let's go to Commissioner Lambert.
I just want to make clear, Michael, we've known each other a long time. You're the same Michael Jimenez, I remember. I wanted to make sure that you understand that what we've been talking about for the past 15 or 20 minutes, there's absolutely no bearing whatsoever on the decision we're making. It has, we have no authority to mandate square footages per unit or whatever. It's the square, it's the square footage of the total project. So although this is very interesting, I want you to understand, and I want to know you understand, that this is not what we're talking about.
You want me to respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Just say yes or no.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fonda Barnardi.
Michael, what is the date of the plans that Gwen Pugh reviewed and stamped? What is the date of those plans?
The 9th of November that he reviewed.
All right, thank you.
And that, and that is the date that the that the draft STOA puts in for the plans. So we're locked in to those plans. And yes, of course, as Jing mentioned, minor amendments count, but that, but it doesn't affect the the error of putting in plans that we now know and we have disclosed are inaccurate. And if that's all that comes out of this tonight, that's, that's a fantastic outcome.
All right, so the first inaccuracy that pops right up is that in the chart that he prepared, it shows that Unit Two, according to the chart, has 2276 square feet. But the HOA reported that it only had 2,103 square feet. So that was a a big drop, you know, that was like, you know, 170 feet drop in area. How do you account for that? Why do you have one number? And the HOA, this, the plans, these charts, which I assume has taken off the plans, is very different than what you have for that same unit?
Can Gwen answer that question?
Hmm, can, well, I.
Well, we're still in public testimony, so, I mean.
Yeah, I. Can Heidi, can Gwen answer that question?
So since you are still in public comments, if he's already spoken, you would probably need a motion to rebring the, you know, he's not a, he's not a presenter, right? So you usually are able to ask the applicant back, the applicant team back.
Yeah, so.
You could make a motion and ask somebody else to come back.
Okay, he's hung up. Let's, let me suggest, can can Gwen give you the answer and you tell it to us? Or do we need to get him back on the phone? Because we can get a motion right now.
I can tell you the answer now, I just got a text.
Right, okay.
Basically, the reason, the difference, Mr. Fonda Barnardi, is because of the demolition that is being proposed for that Rosie Diamond spoke about. That's the difference.
Well, when I, when I, when I look at this thing, if the Unit Two is the one in question, and the floor area, including mechanic room, is 2324, it seems that your client is doing better than than the HOA is saying that they're doing. So where's the problem, I guess, because I'm asking, it's not clear to me where the problem is.
Well, because as Mr. Klein already stated, the the HOA has allocated the density to the owners via this sale. And so they are reporting the results of that sale. They're not reporting the the true density, they're reporting the results of that sale, which technically is, well, it, well, Mr. Klein says it might be legal, there are, until you make your decision, that square feet doesn't exist. And so yet, they're putting that approved square feet into the into the project plans.
But again, I'm sorry to interrupt, Commissioner, but that does not, that is not within our purview. If you have a dispute with the HOA, that is something for you to take up with the HOA outside this forum. It's not the planning commissions, the planning commission's action with respect to that square footage, with respect to the general square footage or these plans, is not, that these are two different, you need a different forum to fight that fight. We are not the forum for that battle.
Right, but you're accepting the November 9th plan. And when you do, they're not correct. And we are, we are, we are putting you on record, that's a factual error that is detrimental to the Unit Two owners' interest.
Okay, let's go to Commissioner Fonda Barnardi.
I'm done with my questions, I just had that.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the city attorney to comment on this because the applicant, we rely on the applicant's presentation of plans. And our decision is based on the plans presented by the by the applicant who has standing. There's an allegation of inaccuracy, which we are not in a position to adjudicate, so.
I mean, I think you summed it up perfectly. You are, just as with any application that comes in, the city reasonably relies on the information that is presented as part of the application. City staff has been working with the applicant on it. So, you know, it's really not something that the city is in a position to dig into or take a position on whether or not the HOA has properly allocated floor area. That is a civil matter. And so, you know, you are asked to act on the application that is presented to you based on the representations in the record that are provided by the applicant and any other evidence that you receive. So, you know, this is, in that way, no different than any other application that you process.
And for clarity, if, for instance, there were, if this were adjudicated elsewhere, if that dispute were adjudicated elsewhere, the remedy for either the HOA or the or the disputing party would be to bring an amendment back to this body to reopen this DR and with different plans for us to review and approve. Would that be, that would be the process?
Yes, so the planning manager can talk about how different the plans could be. But certainly, there are limits to when you would actually need to come back to the planning commission and what can be changed administratively.
And Heidi, or maybe this is a Jean question, isn't it, is it correct that once they go to build, get their building permits, they are going to have to show a set of plans that is stamped by some kind of surveyor who is going to say, these are the accurate numbers? And that there is an understanding that even if those numbers are different than what we see today, that as long as it substantially conforms, they will move forward?
Yes, that is, that is correct. You know, all the the total floor of the building has to comply with the planning commissions, like overall approval.
I don't want to say that this doesn't really matter, but it kind of doesn't really matter because we're not adjudicating it. DBS adjudicates it.
Yes, but I also want to make clear that because we're not adjudicating it, our decision cannot be used as a cudgel by one party against another with respect to the ultimate resolution. Our decision tonight is not dispositive as to anything that has been raised in terms of where the Unit Two owners and the HOA disagree. Whatever we decide, it does not, it does not give them a leg up.
We are only giving them, we are only, if we approve, we are only giving them the approved FAR. And certainly, if somebody wanted to, like, use our decision, then someone could easily get a transcript of this, right? And it would be clear as to how the process works.
Great, okay. I thank you, Mr. Jimenez, thank you for your patience. I see Gwen Pugh has called back in, so do we do have any more questions for Mr. Pugh before we move on? No, are there more callers? Do we have more callers?
I think that was the last speaker, Sean.
Okay, I didn't hear from staff, so was that the last speaker?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay, so then we'll hear from the applicant for three minutes of rebuttal. Uh, yeah, thank you. Okay, so then we'll hear from the applicant for three minutes of rebuttal.
Here we go.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Fresco, now you see why it took four and a half years to get here. Um, there, so obviously, um, different people see the world differently. The HOA is the applicant. The HOA makes decisions by majority vote. There's no requirement that everything be unanimous, similar to the planning commission or the city council in that way. And sometimes there's, uh, you know, just one party that doesn't agree or sometimes doesn't agree with almost anything. And, and unfortunately, that's the situation here at this building. There were some comments made that I personally agreed with Gwen Pugh's plans. That's not true. I haven't even seen Gwen's plans. I know Gwen is an excellent architect and a wonderful person. I love you, Gwen. But, but, uh, no, I have, the, I have not personally nor had, has the HOA agreed to any plans. The plans were submitted, uh, by the HOA, and we stand by them. They will be checked, of course, during the plan check process, as, as many of you have commented. Um, and we believe they're accurate. With the one proviso, that just yesterday, we received, um, word from city staff that they had changed the determination about how landings are treated at stairways. But that's a de minimis thing. That's only a three, three foot by three foot, nine square foot landing area per floor. So, uh, this is not going to have a material impact. What's really going on here, I'm sorry to say, I have learned over four years, is that Sandy and Jonathan are trying to keep all of their illegal square footage without going through the regular process that every other homeowner in the building went through. There was a legal allocation process. There was some private trading. They objected to the allocation process. They elected not to participate in the private training, trading. And so the amount of square footage shown on our plans, it represents what their original was plus the 343 that they got. But I totally understand all the advice you commissioners have gotten from staff, that you should not involve yourselves in this allocation process. And of course, we agree with that, and you should just stay far, far away from it. We've heard a lot of comment here about adopting some other architects' plans and substituting it in for the applicant's plans. Obviously, we do not agree with that. Um, and so almost all of the comments from Unit Two and their various consultants and supporters are totally irrelevant because they're asking you to jump into the morass and start allocating square footage. You should not do that. We are happy with a 1.75 FAR. We have allocated the square footage in a way that we think is fair. And as somebody mentioned, if, if one of the homeowners feels aggrieved, there are civil remedies available to them, and that's the course of action, not to come to the planning commission and ask for a free hand card.
That has been your three-minute rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Robinson? I see no questions. Let's open it up for discussion, uh, Commissioner Fonda Barnardi. You're on mute, Mario.
Sorry about that. Uh, so you're asking us to, uh, accept a set of drawings as conceptual drawings for this project, knowing that they are probably not going to pass muster in their current form. There's going to be some substantial revisions that push them one way or the other. Is that accurate?
No, Commissioner, I believe I characterized the likely changes as de minimis.
Okay, so, um, that you're saying that, uh, you, you feel that they're de minimis enough that we should move ahead with the plans that you have presented, is what you're really saying?
Yes, that is what I'm saying.
And they're saying that they're not de minimis enough, in effect. That's what the argument is.
That, that summarizes it, and you should not insert yourself into this argument.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, barring any questions, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Let's, uh, open discussion. Is there any discussion or emotion? Commissioner Pastor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the project, uh, as recommended by staff.
Is there a second? Moved by Pastor, seconded by Lambert. Is there any discussion on the moment, on the motion? Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, in, in light of everything we've talked about tonight, uh, I, I just want to, uh, turn our attention to, to, uh, Condition 10 in the draft STO, which says that, uh, this is, this approval is for those plans dated November 9th, 2020. Uh, copy, which will be maintained by the City Planning Division. Uh, project development shall be consistent with such plans, except as otherwise specified in these conditions of approval. I wonder if, you know, just thinking ahead to this, maybe heading to litigation one day, if we should be absolutely clear and add a sentence that says something to the effect of, uh, this condition, uh, is not intended to, uh, function as an allocation of internal floor space, uh, amongst the HOA.
Yeah.
Uh, can we hear from? I was gonna ask staff, but is that friendly?
That is a friendly amendment, Commissioner Raskin.
Is that friendly to the seconders as well? Leslie? Yes. Um, can we ask Jane or Heidi to give us some language? Let us, let us do the thing we just agreed to do.
Right, and, and maybe just to, even though, as you know, I do not like to put things in conditions that are already in the code, um, that perhaps we should also say that the, you know, the floor area is subject to review and approval by Building and Safety, as is required as part of the plan check process.
Right, right.
Good. Um, and I believe that Condition 11, um, it may be worth a look at Condition 11, uh, just while we're, we're doing this, because Condition 11 states, "Minor amendments to the overall building floor area shall be subject to approval by the Director of Planning. A significant change in the approved concept shall be subject to planning commission review. Subject construction shall be in conformance with the plans submitted or as modified by the Planning Commission, Architectural Review Board, or Director of Planning." Um, I want to say out loud here, we are not modifying anybody's plans. So, um, we need to, I think, clarify that condition in a way that does not imply in any way that we have a hand in these plans. We are, have a hand in the FAR, not in the plans. So if we're playing with 10 and 11, let's, let's clarify that. I saw Jim's hand before. Commissioner Reese?
He sort of must have been reading my mind.
Oh, good.
Yes, that we put in the language about how these will, must be modified when Building and Safety looks at them.
Right. Um, it, it's 8:15. Um, in the interest of giving staff a break, shall we take a five-minute recess to allow staff to draft revisions to Conditions 10 and 11 for our review? Commissioner Fresco? No.
I wanted to, uh, ask staff, just, you know, I'm still kind of burning a little bit about the code compliance side of this. And, uh, I wonder if we can put a condition that just requires the HOA to notify new buyers that this building is at its maximum floor area when they buy units and that future addition of floor area will not be possible? Or just, just to kind of reinforce that the culture of adding floor area within your own unit has to change?
Commissioner Lambert and I have something to say on that. Commissioner Lambert?
I'm not really sure that's the HOA's role, that they really intervene or feed and sales. The role it does belong to, however, is the Realtor.
Well, it's-
But a Realtor wouldn't know.
I, I don't want us, I don't want, I don't think we should be putting that kind of conditioning. It inserts ourselves into the transaction. We don't want to be in the transaction. Yeah.
Commissioner Fresco, I, I totally understand, and I think that that is a reasonable thought. I, but I think we actually don't really have the purview to do that. And the seller is required by law to disclose. I mean, they're not required to disclose that it's the max FAR, but I think they're required to disclose any of these conflicts.
Yep.
And issues with the FAR.
And, um, I'm gonna ask, before we go on our, I, I did want to get clarity from staff. Um, with respect to the FAR difference, does this DR, the original, the original building was approved with an original DR? So, um, is, does our action completely eliminate, erase, um, eviscerate the original DR and replace it with this? Or I just want to avoid getting into this, I, from a historical preservation standpoint, I, I would like to, Nina's looking shocked. I mean, I'd like to preserve whatever Geary actually originally built. I think that's a reasonable thing. On the other, I'm sorry?
Landmark it.
Well, that's, you can take care of that.
What are we, what are we doing here?
No, I, I'm asking a question because I, we will, this will now be a building that has two DRs attached to it. And we have said over and over again, and I want to re-verify that with staff, that when we approve this FAR, we are not privileging, I, this is not about the, at, the existing FAR. I'm asking a question about whether there is any privilege for the originally approved FAR with the original plans.
What does that mean?
Well, I want to know what's, what, what, what the meaning of our subsequent DR is. Because a building was built with permission. There were plans associated with that building.
This modifies that.
This modifies that. But if there, I'm wanting to make sure we are not inadvertently wading into a dispute. We should, I, we should have something that clarifies that this DR does not privilege new square footage over old square footage or old square footage over new square footage. This DR-
That's also not, I, I don't think that's an appropriate thing to be putting in the conditions.
Well, does this, do we have language that says this DR supersedes and replaces the original DR? That's my question.
It doesn't, because one of the questions I asked staff is, where's the bicycle parking? But that wasn't a requirement in the old DR, so they don't have to do that. Though there are things about the old DR that stand, but floor areas, floor area, and even landmark designation wouldn't make that distinction on the interior.
Okay, and there's no issue?
I don't-
You understand my question? I don't want to, if we are genuinely not adjudicating anything, it needs to be clear that we are not taking a position on really anything. And we're not stopping anybody, one way or the other, from resolving their issues elsewhere.
So has, so any chance staff has had a chance, so in the interest of just trying to finish this up?
Yeah, exactly.
Um, staff, have you had a chance to, um, have to come up with slightly modified Condition 10?
I think, I think we're just, we're just, we, we've been listening to your discussion because it seems like there were additional things to be added, so I wanted the totality of it. Um, so nothing final at the moment. If, if we'd like to take just a brief break for us to make sure that we draft this correctly and we'll have it up on screen.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute break.
Five-minute recess. Let's do it. DAF is ready to go. So we're looking for Commissioner Fonda Bernardi and Commissioner Fresco. And I think we may be close to having them. There we go. We're almost there. And we're ready to go. I think we're good to go. Are we missing anybody? One, two, three, four? Okay. Do we have language?
We do. Let me just share my screen. Can you all see that? So we have a motion on the floor to approve the staff recommendation with the following changes. This modified condition number 10, this will read as it's written in the STOA, with the addition, notwithstanding the foregoing, nothing in this approval sets forth a final allocation of floor area among the units within the building. Modified condition number 11 will read, change to the second sentence, a significant change in the approved concept shall be subject to planning commission review. Construction shall be in conformance with the overall building floor area, the plans submitted or as modified by the planning commission, architecture review board, or director of planning. There was additional discussion around the, having the plans be subject to plan check. I did want to just point that condition number one already says that, that the plans are subject to full compliance review in accordance with all codes in plan check. So we didn't feel a need to add that.
Does that work for everyone? Yes, seeing nods?
Just wait, he said, did you say condition one? We find that in that language?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's just take a minute to look at condition one for everybody. Yeah. Looks like it. Jim, that okay? That, does that cover it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, good. All right, let's go to a vote. If there's no other discussion, shall we go to a vote? We have a roll call for you? Yeah.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Sharon Andrews.
Yes. And do we need a second vote on the STOA?
You do. You need a motion and a vote on the STOA.
Okay.
I have the STOA.
Second.
Okay, moved by pastor, seconded by Fresco. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Sharon Andrews.
Yes. And that concludes this item. Terrific. Thank you all. And let us move on to item 10, written communications. This is, item's not related to tonight's agenda. We did receive one piece of correspondence related to ADU construction that was received and posted with the online agenda packet. I'm advised that we may acknowledge the correspondence and discuss it briefly if we want to agendize future action related to it. My own observation is that this is a good, a good item to look at in the next bucket of zoning cleanup, in order to facilitate the construction of things that would otherwise be allowed, but are required to be dual permitted because of the order in which they have to exist. The code doesn't allow it, and I've discussed it with DAF. But if we ever, if we do another zoning code cleanup, this might be something to discuss as part of streamlining things that are already allowed. That, right idea. Okay. I'm going to just request for the record that it be included in the future. The next time, what are we, bucket two and a half now?
Yeah, I mean, I would note, because we got council direction to like study ADUs as part of the housing element update, it would, that, that's really all our staff resources are being directed towards, you know, the upland use update of all that. So we will, we will consider this, this issue as part of that, because it is obviously very much a policy discussion.
Sure. And that would facilitate, that would facilitate fulfillment of the housing element, you know, that would facilitate fulfillment of the housing element through streamlining. That's a great place to look at it. Okay. Well, that worked. Let's move on to public input. Do we have anybody registered and or in the queue?
Do not.
Sorry?
No callers.
No callers. Terrific. Well, in that case, can we have a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
By everybody, moved and seconded by everybody, without objection, we adjourned and we'll see you next week. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Bye.